Hello.
Hello.
Oh, never mind.
You have your sherry stick over there then?
Oh. Yeah, I have like four of these at home now.
Well, I think I walked out on the other day, but I don't remember.
All right.
Uh, just have to see to them over there and then be able to.
Did you guys should do get those down? All right. Love you too, I'll talk to you later. Okay. Love you too. All right, love you too, I'll see you afterwards.
Who's that, John?
I'm Bruce Sherwin.
I think one of our guys in the lodge showed up. They don't say the crap for me.
I think so, we're gonna have to dress up and do it fully off the cuff.
It's great when you go to.
Oh, he had the, he had the combat boots.
Go to Miss Cogee for the rent current help weekend, trust me, you can. A lot of filthy.
I've had a woman once and I can't prove my hair needs and. You ever catch me wearing it?
Oh, why not?
Hmm, I don't even like leaving the house in shorts. Took me forty-five years to leave the house.
Hi, John.
Hi.
Can you come up on the wall? Yeah, is he the spot first?
She goes down.
Oh, is this?
Hold it.
There's someone in this connect.
Oh, perfect, perfect, perfect.
Good start.
Yep.
Let's get it. Can you make her some stuff?
I haven't.
My class secretary has checked.
Okay, it's five fifty-five.
I see there's another one there. Did you hear recorder on Heather? Is it on?
Yes, ma'am. Yep. And I left my keys to help me remember not to forget it, but help me remember executive session.
It's five fifty-five. Public hearing, town of Tryon, Burke Baptist Church, 122 North First Street, Tryon, Oklahoma. September 2nd, 2025 at 5:55 PM. Call to orders. Rule call.
Sandy here.
James here.
Jenny here.
Nathan here.
Richard here.
Public hearing on mileage compensation ordinance change.
I don't know if you want to read it or. This is how what it states now. And this is what we need to change if we were just going anywhere, it says the fifty dollars.
Richard, could you read it so that we know what it says?
Yes, thank you.
I was just about to ask if we can add your copies.
In order to the town of Tryon changing reimbursement for non-received expenses. Be ordained by the Order of Town of Trustees, Tryon, that following ordinance be adopted. Section 156C, Section 1. Tryon Town Code Compensation of Personnel Determined by Ordinance. Town Clerk, Utility Clerk, or Town Treasurer may further be reimbursed the sum of fifty dollars per pay period for those expenses that normally occur, but for which is unreasonable to maintain receipts and records such as bank deposit trips. Passed the 10th of March, 2020.
That's how it reads now?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
The new ordinance, if passed, an ordinance in town of Tryon changing reimbursement for non-received expenses, but be ordained by the Town of Trustees, the Town of Tryon, following ordinance be adopted. Section 156, 1-56C, Chapter 1. Tryon Town Code Compensation Personnel Determined by Ordinance. Section C. Town Clerk, Utility Clerk, Town Treasurer may further be reimbursed for those expenses that normally occur, but for which is unreasonable to maintain receipts and records such as bank trips.
And do you have that same section states employees and officers of town may be reimbursed for travel and other expenses incurred in relation to town business under and according to current internal revenue service guidelines.
So we're taking out Department states fifty dollars per pay period?
Yeah.
And not putting anything in its place?
Correct, because on V it states that under those, the town business under and according to current internal revenue service guidelines. So D states that the reimbursement for those bank trips that was stated in C is will go with whatever the current.
Which the covering is.
Seventy cents.
Seventy cents.
But then it puts us in a spot where if the, if the IRS suggests that it's increased from that, then we are obligated to do that instead of having any autonomy ourselves, right?
Well, with the bank reimbursement, from my understanding, it's like you're required to, whatever the internal revenue service states is the state regulated amount, that's what we have to go with anyways.
Yep.
Yeah, that's true.
Good. I'm good.
So, public opinion.
I just had.
So it'll, so what it's changing to is actual mileage, mileage times hour minutes and so whatever.
Yeah, seventy cents.
Okay. Sorry.
No, no, you're, you're fine.
Where in there does it state that as long as there's a working vehicle in the town? That that should be, that should only be paid if there's not a working vehicle. They have to use their own vehicle, but as long as we have one, then it should only cost the gas as long as they do it on business hours.
It's not in this section, it's in a different section, it's where it's over completely different sections.
Can we read it just so we can make sure there's, that we all agree? Cause there are many different ways to interpret it.
I don't have that section pulled up.
Well, I, I had a question. So, in the last meeting, nobody made a motion for a public notice or a public hearing. And did we publish it?
It's posted as in normal places that we post it. We've never had to post one of these in a newspaper, ever. They get posted the same places we post our agendas, that's a public posting.
And that kind of brings me to that. I can't read those. They won't open on my phone.
That's a text my good thing. There's other, Anna Cross has actually said that she can't open her links on her phone, so I'm not quite sure what the issue is. I told Anna to come in to see if I can correct it, but that's a, that takes my good thing, so I'm not for sure what that is.
I get some of them, like the ones about the water and stuff, but when it comes to the agenda or meeting, I don't get them. I can't open them to read them on my phone or not.
What the problem is.
I was gonna say, I'll look it up, maybe it's something that has to do with public hearings that spending grant money or doing a big project, but I'm almost certain you have to post it and let the public know that you're changing something. Do you have any idea? Is that Mr. Stephan? Cause it wasn't voted on its last meeting to be called a public hearing, that was not talked about at the table. It was dismissed with no, no motion, no. Anyway, just something that I think, cause this has happened a couple of times and I've said something, but it's just been ignored.
I'll have to look again to make sure, I mean, I.
And it, I just, I know it's not really gonna change anything now, but this isn't the first time and it's just been ignored.
Yeah, we talked about it.
I remember talking about it.
Yeah, you talked about it, but there was no motion.
Well, yeah, I was supposed to say, I remember talking about it.
I can tell you exactly in a minute, cause before I said anything, I double-checked the video.
I don't actually think they need to have a motion in the last meeting to do it. But if it's a change in your ordinance, I'm pretty sure it has to be in the paper.
Either way, yeah, just something to.
I just don't know. Make sure we're some all over it.
Yeah, I'll look into it to make sure. I mean, at the, at the end of the day, on this particular issue, I mean, reimburse at whatever the IRS rate is and that sometimes, some years it goes up, some years it goes down, that's. And that depends on what the IRS said, but that matter, I mean, it's really not something we can exercise. I mean, if it doesn't say reimburse at the IRS rate, it really just should. I mean, that's the way it should be. It's not the way that we have.
Yeah, some of ours is contradicting itself, like C says twenty-five, but then the bottom says that the internal revenue services for fifty dollars. So, just like we talked before about going through the handbook, we've got to get our book updated. Cause everything is severely outdated.
Right.
But if we're gonna change this though, we might as well just change it to what the basic, your short street.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Is whatever the IRS rate is.
Reimbursed at the prevailing for that calendar year.
Yeah, current international revenue service.
There's no way around it.
And I understand like afterwards with the ordinance is those get posted in the paper, once it gets accepted, those ordinance get posted in the paper.
Cause if the IRS or the general services, we can get the.
It says online, internal revenue.
It's IRS. They do that, yeah. And every, every January 1st, they put it in one out.
Any other comments? Motion to Richard.
I'll make a motion to Richard. Richard on it.
Sandy seconds.
Jenny yes?
Jenny yes, making yes.
Richard, yes.
I will look forward to what you were asking about, Jeannie, with the ordinance when I get home and I can have internet and I can search. What you're asking about the use of vehicles.
I mean, have town utilities, vehicles.
If that's okay with you, I'll send you a message on Facebook when I find where it's at, so you can look it up.
I mean, I've seen it. I can tell you where it is right now, but.
Okay, Town of Tryon, Board of Trustees, regular meeting, September 2nd, 2025. It's now six oh five PM. First Baptist Church, 122 North First Street, Tryon, Oklahoma. Amended agenda was amended on August 30th at 3:45 PM. Call to order. Rule call.
Sandy here.
James here.
Jen here.
Nathan here.
Richard here.
Consideration of action on consent agenda approved over the minutes from August 5th, 2025.
We got the talkable, we're gonna email them to you the other day. Yeah, me and Jenna have been talking about changing maybe the layout, the layout of our minutes. So this is just a different layout that we're working on. Just thoughts and opinions, don't like it too much, edit, whatever needs to, what are the opinions?
Um, so the only thing that I would like to see on it is when it talks about whoever made the motion, we have just the first initial. Since we have Jenna and James, it's like Jay makes the motion and then you have to go and see which one voted, so it must be the other one who made the motion.
Right, I've seen that.
Yep, so if we could just get the full first name as to who presented the motion, would be amazing. And I would also love to see a summary at the end of like the motion passed five to zero, or the motion failed three to two, or just at the end of it. My, my goal is I would like to get, eventually get these published on our website, so that way the more legible they are for everybody else. Yep, but then right afterwards, have it say the motion passed or the motion failed with the count.
Yep.
I make a motion, we approve the August 5th, 2025 minutes.
James second.
Jenny, yes?
Nathan, yes.
Richard, yes.
Uh, approval of monthly department head reports. First report.
Don't have a first report.
Fire department's the one we got on the internet, does he?
Is Jenny here?
No, she's second.
So she was talking about having some, having three open spots on the waiting list for the commodity boxes, is that her food boxes?
Yeah. With the, with the food boxes.
Do we publish that anywhere so people know?
I'm not quite sure where she publishes that. I know she'll post it on like the.
It's on the library.
Yeah, she posts it on the library website.
Yeah, I wonder if there's some, if we should be able to post that on like our Town of Tryon page too. That way people who don't go to the library and need food are aware maybe.
And I know, I think with that program, she's required to have ten on the waiting list. Up to ten on the waiting list. But we can get with her and I'll check, see what.
Is there anything from the last one?
The email that she sent to me, she said that I can give you guys the following update. One, without a SAM.gov active account authorized to federal, to receive federal financial aid, I cannot include them on the federal grants that she's working on. Until the REIT grant is completed and closed, they are not eligible for another REIT grant, which we already knew that, we were gonna talk about that. Once the TSET Health Incentive Grant Funds have been utilized for the new city hall, please document the purchases in order to submit to the TSET. Until this is completed, Tryon is not eligible for another TSET grant. So the schedule conflict has been created on her end with attending the first Tuesday of each month. She said that she's been keeping an eye out for any grant opportunities that would be a good match for Tryon. When she finds something, she's happy to pass opportunities along.
So we're not getting the TSET grant?
One of the TSET, we already have one TSET grant, but the funds have not been spent because they're to go to the building. So as soon as that TSET grant gets, gets spent, then we can apply for another one. But that's, it says, once the TSET Health Incentive Grant Funds have been utilized for the new city hall, please document the purchases in order to submit the TSET. Until this is completed, Tryon is not eligible for another TSET grant.
So what happened to the playground grant?
I'm not for sure exactly what, I just asked her for an update on the grants that we have and this is what I just got at 5:18.
She wasn't part of the playground grant, that was back beginning of 2024.
Yeah, I think most of hers was like the, the walk-around path and.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, stuff like that.
I thought she was talking about the one that Amanda.
No.
I'm not for sure.
For the grants now, all of a sudden we're not.
The, like the camping facility and the community garden and all that stuff.
Yeah, that one.
So what did she say about being, not being eligible for federal grants because we don't have?
She said, without a SAM.gov active account authorized to receive federal financial aid, I cannot include them on the federal grants that I am working on.
Did she say anything about if we're eligible to get an account or?
I know she was working on it.
I thought Kimberly got the Sims.
No, Leslie didn't. She started it, cause we're, everyone we're having problems with, Jennifer Kasten was on there, we're charging them removed.
Yes.
I need to, didn't update on that, cause I, she was supposed to be removed so that she, she can get access to the SAM.gov account to see what's going on.
So we have an account, it's just not active that we.
I wish so, because of that name.
That's the way she left it the last time.
And she is the.
Leslie, grant administrator.
Okay.
So let's try to get that done for next month's meeting.
Yep.
And then, so then basically she's saying she won't ever be able to make any of our meetings again?
That's what she says. Schedule conflict has been created on her end with attending the first Tuesday of each month, so that's what I think.
Anything from the fire department that they want to talk about, or are we still good?
Um, we're still good. We did get our new truck last week, so we're gonna start rigging that up.
Good to hear.
Do you have any department head comments? I make a motion to approve monthly department head reports.
Sandy seconds.
Jenny, yes?
Nathan, yes.
Richard, yes.
Provo monthly financial report for July 20, 25.
And we still have not got the footbooks pinned up. That usually gets pushed to the bottom of the list. There's still some extra stuff on there.
Oh, can you let Jenny know, I noticed that at the library that all that old, old, old stuff off their financial, off their reports.
Okay.
So.
Also, I see I should do that.
There, there's no more of the 2021, 2022.
I got some of it off, but it's nothing like it, just kept popping up there. I defaulted back on there. I'm trying to look to see if it was back on there.
I had a couple of questions, as I usually do. About two thirds of the way down the first page, there is a deposit item returned. We had a return check. Was that our check got returned or somebody?
An individual that had a citation paying the check and then it got returned.
And then we got, then we're able to pay that then now, okay. And then a little bit further down, there's a law enforcement systems, Oklahoma uniform violations complaint, so a $223 charge.
Those are for our citations, our tickets themselves.
The booklets.
Yeah, the booklets.
I asked about that today.
Okay. And then do those go to like Iowa tribe then? And then I noticed the, on the top of the second page, thank you for, for breaking out all the payroll. I just don't see, on the 31st, I don't see your paycheck at all, breaking.
Um, it could, let me see. I'm not, it's not showing either one, I'm not quite sure where it's on in there.
Cause even in the, the ledgers and stuff too, it's not, it's, so it's almost like that line never got for any footbooks.
Yeah, I'll have to check on that.
There's two in the middle of the first page.
Yeah, that's a reduced payroll. Cause if I put, when I was entering them, if I was, if I put a different date on them, it could have put it in a different bracket on there.
On the first pages of the general ledger, there was a couple of Amazon charges. What's the $200 one?
It could have been Tryon, I'm trying to find Amazon.
One for children, one?
Yep. I think it was in Tryon, cause we have to buy.
But that was, that was a good deal, cause isn't that usually like 256 or 246?
I have quadruple check on that one as well, but I'm pretty sure it's Tryon.
Alright, and I was just gonna double-check these deleted accounts here.
Which one that?
So they're on page five of five, of the general ledger, at the bottom you have Tryon Disaster Relief Fund deleted, Tryon Revenue Fund deleted, Street and Alley deleted, and it looks like they're all zero, zero dollar accounts. I was just curious.
Yeah, I have no idea about that. I don't know what that, I've never even seen that on a report.
I haven't either, that's why I was gonna ask about it.
Cause I don't deal with the utility trust fund, that's sorry. The Tryon Disaster Relief, I've never even heard of that. The Street and Alley, that's never, we've never had a Street and Alley account in the last seven years, so I'm not for sure.
Now that was back in the day.
So we don't currently have any disaster relief fund?
No. And just like the CDVG grant, I don't know why that's pulled up, why that got pulled up with that. Which would also explain why it's. Yeah, I've never seen that on the report.
So, cause you did get paid on the 31st, yeah?
Yeah. I could have just added an August date or something accidentally, or whatever, but I just don't think it's going to say. Cause it'll be allocated just like those aren't like the same date period and all that, so I just have to check to make sure.
Any other questions, John?
That's all I have.
Anybody else?
Any motion on financial reports?
I make a motion to approve monthly financial reports for July 20, 25.
Sandy seconds.
Jenna, no. I don't think we should approve financial reports if we know there is at least one way missing on them. Especially with all the problems that we had with embezzlers and things, auditor would probably look at this and say, where, where is that paycheck? How much do they get paid? Jenna, no.
I have to agree with Jen on that part. I'd have to go with no on it too.
And I'll agree with them, have to put it off until next month, so they can trade it out.
Yeah, just get it printed out.
Approval monthly claims?
All my monthly claims up at the top of the POs. There's payroll that was at the last of last month, that was left off in the last PO. Added to this PO. So that it's on record and it's covered.
Your motion wants to do with the monthly claims.
So I am seeing your paycheck on the 31st on the PO list. So I am okay, I am okay making a motion that we accept the monthly claims.
Tell us like a motion.
James, yes.
Nathan, yes.
Sandy, yes.
Consideration of items removed from consent agenda? Was there anything removed?
Before we roll on into that, I was gonna ask, we made it headway on getting those two audits and everything.
I contacted them again today, there's a resident that came in asking about that as well. So, she's got some information and then I emailed them again. If I don't have a response tomorrow morning, I will be calling them.
It seems like they've just been sitting on two of them.
That's what the last four or five auditors have been doing.
Cause like if a bigger case come in, they, one of the auditors even told me that we will get bumped down, cause there will be a priority.
Well, the problem is, is they're sitting on two and coming up on another one. And then they're gonna be sitting on three, and then we're gonna be in the same hole again.
Start spamming them every morning?
Yeah. Yeah, I can't get a hold of them tomorrow, I'll just send everybody out there.
Are they gonna kill them if you want it at a time?
I mean, give them.
I'd rather get one this morning than wait a year for three of them.
Anything else, Nick?
No, that was it.
Public appearances, petitions, demonstrations, communications, and personal appearances.
Heather, I told. Head of the board.
Yeah. Y'all are, here I am, I'm gonna sit here instead of trying to stand up with all the. So on the first page is just a layout, and I don't plan on being here till 11:00, so I'm not gonna talk all a lot. It's just files for you guys to look at, I just kinda wanna hit some points about what's in it. And try to get a little bit of dialogue with you guys. Um, and try to get a little bit of dialogue with you guys. Public records request from five-seven-twenty-four. Is there an update on any of that? Autumn went on.
And I've got, I've gotta get with her. I will just tell you generally, I, and I'm gonna say this to you in the spirit of, you'll get this, I'm not. In my assessment, my recollection is, I don't think there's, with very few items, there's a couple of little things where I could go back and go and say, well, you're not entitled to this. But in broad terms, you're entitled to most stuff you're asking for. Recognizing, of course, the other part of that is, whether they have it or don't have it's another question altogether. And, and, and so that's what I've gotta coordinate with.
We all know they don't have.
And that, so, I understand. And, and so that's, but I'm, and I've got on my list to get with her, because there's been other things going on, and I had a death of my family last, so that delayed me a little bit, but I'm gonna get with her, just kinda go through and say, yes, yes, yet, all those are yeses. What does it take to get that to you, okay? So the movement will happen, and before next meeting, I'm gonna have you a specific answer on it.
Sounds great. And so then, B, I did go on and put in here, um, the correspondence between the town clerk and myself. It got a little heated, and I would just prefer, um, to do this in the future, talk to you guys. I'm not gonna do the back and forth, and it was exhausting. I didn't have time for it, but I had to answer emails with her. So mainly it was about, um, I've been requesting the July first audio since I messed up the recording. And it was, um, told to me that the town clerk and the attorney had basically created a fee that I should pay, and that never went before the board that.
Trying to interrupt you right there?
Absolutely.
Where, Stefan, where did you get the twenty-five dollars for that video? Cause I, I saw the email where, where you repeatedly asked Stefan, and that was Stefan's reply.
I, the twenty-five dol, I'm gonna be real honest, the twenty-five dollars, I, I don't recall where that number came from. I thought that number was kicked around to me.
To your previous attorney.
But, yeah, and that may be what, what.
And I contacted Owen.
I.
That was never come, that never got brought out to the table. So what the attorney told the town clerk in private is basically null and void.
Well, not necessarily.
There was nothing in the ordinances or brought up and talked to in the meeting.
I understand. But in general, I mean, prior, I mean, whenever a council for the board is giving advice, that's, it is advice to the town officers or the board or whatever, and not all those are gonna occur, obviously, in the presence of a, of a meeting like this.
Yes.
And, and so, th- those things can happen. It doesn't make, and just because they change doesn't make it null and void. I will say, there may not have been discussion, of course, I'm not privy to whether there was some discussion in a board meeting before, but I do know that in general, and I think the municipal league, and I think anybody else who you talk to will tell you, that it is not improper and town can charge, and this is where those ones get tricky, that the reasonable fee for, for whatever, so that they're not bearing the burden of somebody coming in and going and doing it. The twenty-five was a number that came up, and I think the question that was asked, without getting into it, was, hey, do you agree? And I said, yeah, I don't have a problem with, with the number. I don't know that the twenty-five dollars, if it coincides with a, I mean, for instance, if you're looking for, if we're gonna have to provide a thumb drive, what's the cost of a thumb drive and, and things of that nature? So there may be some cost, because you're also then compensating part of the fees that you can charge for open records requests, of course. It's not just the paper or the thumb drive or whatever, but it's recognizing, and particularly, I'm gonna use in our example here, we've got a finite number of employees working finite hours, and to sit down and then take part of their time off to sit and create that is worth something as well.
I mean, it's three clicks of a button, copy, paste, email.
In, in terms of the time and the things, so I understand.
Obvious it was for the residents, for the town, because I did mess up, which is not why I have the reporter on the table. But I did mess up some on the camera, and I didn't get any of the audio. So I also am aware that whenever it's in that setting for the public, I, I don't mind paying a fee, but first off, I think it should go before the board, and it should have a public hearing, and the town should be able to talk about it. But at this moment, that should have been when the town was responsible for videoing, and we had some drag in our feet on that. You guys voted to start buying, to buy and to start videoing, and that happened to be the meeting I screwed up. And so when I requested, I didn't think anything of it, and here we are, I was told I need to pay a fee, and I was, now I'm saying I think the board needs to discuss it, rounding, round we go. So.
Is our FOIA request pay schedule in the ordinance?
I.
I don't remember seeing it.
I don't think there is.
Do we need to have it in the ordinance? Cause if not, then I wouldn't mind next meeting, sitting down and breaking down exactly what our FOIA fee should be, so we can have a schedule, a fee schedule posted. I don't like that it's not posted in town hall. It should be.
I would like to add, the whole five hundred dollars was because the town stated that they needed to separate executive session from every meeting. And I had then told the board then, that it was illegal for y'all, for the board, to record executive session and then freely hand it over to our town clerk to listen to everything that was said. So now that's kind of the stalemate we're at.
So there should not be recordings of executive session?
There should not.
Ever. Ever.
And then the town clerk should have definitely not had access to that information for the past five, six years.
And I know I'm only one of five voices, but I really feel that we should give her the five hundred dollars back. I truly believe that that was done as a deterrent, which is illegal as heck.
It's not illegal to charge.
It is illegal to charge as a deterrent.
As, as a deterrent, if it, if it's designed to try to.
It wasn't.
Try to approximate.
Yeah, absolutely. The other things that were happening outside of the meeting. No.
Alright, oh, yeah. I mean, in my opinion, this is my opinion, if, if, if somebody, even myself, comes in with a court request that's gonna take research, then that should be kind of quoted ahead of time, you know, hey, this is gonna take approximately three hours, this is what we're gonna need. If you'd like that, please bring us the money, we'll do it. Not, you know, give us a whole bunch of money upfront, and we'll just decide to take out as.
And nineteen months later, I still don't have it.
And I will say, and I'm also, I mean, if we're recording, and we all kinda need to just bear in mind that when we have fifteen people talking, that audio's gonna be useless, okay? The, with, because that was an issue that, I mean, that was done even before I was, I was on, I was on board here and knowing anything. And I don't know, I mean, on the one hand, I can look, I'll just tell you from my experience, I can tell you that if somebody said five hundred dollars, because if we're gonna have reams and reams of paper being copied and, and all those types of things, and, and there's a whole lot involved, plus on top of that, it is okay then for the town to charge for some additional time, and it's gonna require time, or having somebody else come on, or bringing somebody temporarily to sit and make copies and collate, do all that, so those are there. It's not that five hundred dollars is so shocking to conscience, as a broad term. It is a matter of, it does need to be somewhat tied realistically to what you think you're prepaying, what you think this is gonna be, and the one thing I've always said from the get-go is, once it's all done and you get what you get, if that comes to three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, you're obviously getting a hundred, not math, but a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars back, or whatever, that we could at least tie to it and make it make whatever sense.
Well, it has been said that basically the board said to ignore me, and so that's why you see the amount, you said it in an open meeting.
So, and that's where, so I don't know, I, to answer your question, yes, you can't say, oh, hey, for Ms. Smith, sure, no big deal, we'll give you whatever you want, hey, and I'm gonna pick on Heather here, Heather, it's five hundred dollars before you're gonna get it. If you start doing that, clearly you have, you're doing it as a deterrent, and that's multiplying, if she shows to stand up and, and go challenge that, okay? You can't do that. It's gonna have to be tied. To, back to your other question, it's probably not a horrible deal to have a list of some kind of a thing for FOIA requests. That said, my understanding is too, we've talked about this, we're gonna start eventually at some point having recordings made, so things like thumb drives of audio or record, shouldn't have to be necessary, cause we're gonna have recordings made that somebody can go get. We're not gonna have that technology fee, because it's gonna be publicly available.
I, I would like to add, just for future, I think you should still put something in there for, if I wanted a physical, I don't know what their plan is.
True.
Cause then they could just decide to take the website down, or YouTube crashes, or.
There, there's always problems. They're gonna have to have something for, or whatever, but no, exactly, and that's what I'm saying. But I, you have to be real careful too, when you're doing a list of, this is what it's gonna cost. The reality is, the cost per page, that's controlled, like everything else. I mean, if you wanna go get copies of your medical or if you're a doctor, the statute says they can charge up to X amount per page for your medical record, and the same thing goes for here.
And, and I feel if we had something that we've all agreed on, and all put together with, and posted it, then we wouldn't have to have these questions. You wouldn't need to contact the lawyer, how much do I charge for this, because it's there. You as a resident wouldn't need to know, is this something I'm gonna have to pay for or not?
And the whole town already sees a, a fee charge.
Right.
I, I will say that myself personally, cybersecurity, I will never, ever want to have just anybody's thumb drive come put in one of our computers.
Now, I did buy a brand new one. I didn't even open it. I had delivered it in the box.
See, would be maybe some kind of Tryon branded thumb drives that we, you know, five dollars to do it, but that's, I'd love to have that conversation in the next meeting, where we have it on the agenda and have it legal.
So, thank you. Um, so we'll just move to the next one. C, I did receive, um, some confusing information I wanna clarify. I did request Mary Lee's water bill, just to compare apples to apples. April twenty-twenty-two to April twenty-twenty-four, what was her bill? I did watch the video, and I very much appreciated what she shared, Stefan, about the yin yang and about being transparent, and I think, I thought I wanna, I'm trying not to be like that, cause I don't wanna have you guys here till eleven either. Um, but I would really like to see numbers, just to, for the town to see, cause I really didn't personally have a problem with it. I do see how other people could have, but if you read the ordinance, it was very suspect to the person's interpretation. And I know for a fact, Richard's not up there inputting in the utility side and giving himself free water. So I, he couldn't have hid that. That, that's not something he has any control over.
Did you include your copy for your request for the previous board member's water?
I did not, but I can. I had so many papers in this requesting her, um, water bills from April twenty-twenty-two to April twenty-twenty-four at when she was aboard, just to compare what she was talking about with the two years he, two and a half now, I guess, but I can only technically get legally too, because she wasn't a trustee the past six months. So it was said that there's conflicting, like that y'all weren't sure that you could fill it, but y'all filled it for Mary Lee within, I'm assuming probably hours after it was requested.
No, two weeks.
Okay, well, two weeks. It's been a month. So it, I'm just saying, in my, in the email, it made it sound like, oh, we can't give that to you, and I found that very.
I wasn't clear if, because now she's a private citizen, if we could do that. Richard is on Stone.
I was requesting that you.
They said the way that it was requested as from the business aspect.
But it is the town's clerk responsibility to communicate with me and make sure I'm filling it.
Requested as a business, like she requested it as a business, as a business purpose. But that, I did not do with that request, that was, that was Jones, that did that.
If, if I remember the Fair Records Act right, if you're requesting public officials' financial information for a business purpose, that is not something that's open to record. Am I remembering that right?
Yeah.
So that is my bad. I did, I guess I must have grabbed an old letter, I mean, an old paper, um, cause I tip, I, well, in the very beginning, the first two or three months, it was for business, and I must have just grabbed, cause I just copied, I like copied a bunch of them.
So that.
So I've been, if somebody would have told me, I would have fixed this a month ago.
Can we just mark it as denied in the back door, and she can submit a new one?
Yeah, I can do that. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I have it ready to go. I just was waiting on.
But I, I need that information to correct it, like that was just a mess up on my side. Um, okay, so C, right quick, I just wanted to show you, I, I'd be, packet, sorry, two, packet. Um, this is a communication with me and the Lincoln County newspaper. There's been some misinformation about us. You can, you can read the email. Y'all are adults. It's just exactly where.
Paper is.
Packet number two. Video twenty-five, June twenty-five, that minute right there is, it says, for a reason we can't use the county. The next page, it says, um, the county responding. I have absolutely no idea where she got that information, basically. Here is the legal notification on their, what they require. It just makes a whole lot more sense to put things in a county paper instead of a Craig paper, who's almost an hour away. I'm probably the only person that subscribes to that newspaper since this started.
So I don't, I don't see that this person has no idea where, where she would have gotten that from. I see she has no idea who told her that.
Well, I was looking at the next page. Yeah, okay.
So, to me, that doesn't imply that she got it from somewhere nobody knows where.
Well, you just have to take your own time and read the email. I'm giving you guys the information in the meeting. Everybody has it.
I have absolutely no idea who told her that, but as far as I'm aware, that has never been our policy. That doesn't
So what.
Say that the other person was wrong. It was saying that they don't know.
Yes. So what are you, what are you referring to?
I'm, I'm saying that this doesn't, doesn't, isn't proof of malicious intent, is a proof of, somebody in the Lincoln County newspaper doesn't know who else in the Lincoln County newspaper told her that.
Continue reading, it says that there's, there was a gym, and I'm, I'm not gonna read it for everybody. Like, y'all are adults, you can take care of. I'm just bringing you information that I saw was conflicting to what had been said for the past nineteen months in this meeting, in our meetings here. It's just, it's weird that we're not putting our information in the.
Why is that newspaper so important to you?
Because it's our county.
Everybody would get.
It's available at him.
Then you can buy one at the store.
We don't have a Craig paper in.
No, but we did put these last couple of job openings in Cushing and Perkins.
Okay, but if.
No, we always put them in Cushing.
You'll take a look at the date?
So I mean, do we, do we want people from all the way west of Stroud to apply for positions? Or all the way, I mean, I know you're from Stroud, so, you know, but I mean, it goes even farther than that. Or do we want people from, from Craig to apply?
Well, people in Carney, Ag, Agro.
But Carney's not in Lincoln County, is it?
Yeah.
It is.
So I wish this had the date, cause this has been, I, I can forward you guys a screenshot. Yeah. It only makes sense. Um, I don't know why the date's not on here, but I did research this back, like at the beginning of the year, and I don't know why the date's not on there. So what you just stated that y'all did, I'm happy it went to the, to the Perkins. I think that's great. And now I guess the Cushing can get it, since Mary Lee's not up here with y'all.
Well, we've been posting in Cushing for a while. They just don't charge us when Mary Lee was on the board.
I've never seen it in Cushing, but, I mean, I, I jumped to Craig, because that's what I was told y'all were putting stuff.
That's what I remember hearing too.
It always went in the three, Cushing, Perkins, and Craig.
Well, and just so we're clear, all, all states that you require, whenever you do it, is that it's gotta be in a newspaper of general circulation within the community, so it's, we can all debate which one is the better of two, but that's all the attention requires is, the paper of, it's, um,
Well, my whole point.
General circulation individually.
Yeah, my whole point was just that it had been said that we can't do that. We can't do that because of ABC.
I understand, but.
And it was like, um, let's fact check this, and.
I don't understand. I hear what you're saying.
Okay, so three. Um, I have brought this up several times. The town clerk position is, was, uh, okay. Number three, our town clerk position is still legally an elected position, seeing as Ms. Sandy Munner did not follow the laws when making this an open, an appointed position. Since there was never a vote on this by the town, you can't change an ordinance without having it go before the town for a vote. That's packet three.
There was a vote, cause I remember that vote.
I meant with the town, the town.
There was a vote here.
Well, but there, there wasn't a town vote, and that is, I can.
We had to wait for the next election.
Right, we had to wait.
But it had been said that it was moved.
And I don't know why my name is there, because I was not even there.
The reason your name is there, because January fourteenth, twenty-twenty, um, it talks about where the, the town has decided to make the appointed position from appoint, uh, uh, elected to an appointed position.
Sandra, wasn't you on the board then?
I was, yes, and we did, we did vote on it, and.
Yeah, voted on it here, but the town should have, and it, and I, and you can look at the emails from Mick, because he's the one that helped me research it, cause it did get a little bit over my head. Um, but in here, he does talk about how it does have to go before the town on a vote, and. and the opposite year of when it is the town clerk's position is termed, the term up or something.
I actually talked to the election board on that.
Yes, and that is...
She said that if we want to do away with it, we just have to do it, change the ordinance before the next election to do away with the board that...
Well, I think we need to research that a little bit, because it is still with the county that it is an elected position. It is not an appointed position.
Yeah, we were never...
I got paperwork, but I know they voted on it in Arizona's past.
But, and it's my understanding, with Mick's being the influencer of helping me research this, he said it would have to go before the residents to vote on an opposite... Or is it for your term for the town clerk? So, I'm just saying, this is some of the stuff, because we're having issues. I don't think it's like a genius to figure this out.
I tried to get, because I was on the board when that happened. And that was one of the things that we tried to do, was try to make it where we had the power and that, and control over that position, instead of it being an elected position, where, like, if Candace wanted to stay on that position until she got voted out for the next election, she would have stayed or got convicted of the charge. And there was nothing the board could do about it.
And that's fine, but you still have to make, we have to make sure that it was done legally, because there's no proof at the county, and whenever there's conflicting information in the town and in the county, that's some red flags.
It just probably wasn't sent to the county, but...
But it was, there was never a vote taken by the county at the election for the residents to vote on.
And if we, and if one of us were to reach out to the county commissioner, and they were to say that, "No, the public does not need to vote on it," would you be okay with that, then?
Kind of election board.
Even if the county election doesn't, because there's a state inspector...
Because there's a state law that, I mean, it's all in the packet. I'm not gonna go through every little single state statute. This is exhausting.
I'm not sure. Shouldn't have the state law.
No, election board.
The election boards?
Election board.
Because the Lincoln County also does things not right. So, if you guys have something in Lincoln County's opposite, the state law would supersede both counties. Well, I mean, you're more than welcome. This is why I gave you a copy of all the correspondence. That's packet five.
Not to be rude, but if you're wanting something from us, why do we need to do the research for you?
I did the research. I just handed it all to you.
She wants us to confront it.
Right.
She's right about that.
If you're making an accusation, the onus is on you to provide...
You have the paperwork.
Is Mick with the election board?
State auditor.
Maybe he's a state auditor. And if you'll take a look at his very last paper, he states, "I am here to help, so that we can keep your town out of a state auditor."
I understand that. What does Mick Dodson inspect for the state? Is it the election information?
He's a senior investigator for the state auditor-inspector office.
He gives us advice.
Would he have, would he be the best person to know this info?
I'll say this. I've got email. I've been in contact with Mick as well. There is not, from his perspective, anything currently open that he's investigating from the state auditor-inspector's office. His position has been, and that's something that I have spoken with, because this all predated me, too. And I had spoken to Brittany about it, and I was gonna talk to her about it as well, to find out what exactly was the transparent... His position, as he stated to me, was, he thinks he sees a problem, and he doesn't care one way or the other, but he just wants to make sure that if there's a problem, that it gets fixed. And that's what he's told me, and I've been in contact with him as well, because I'm trying to figure out...
That's how the residents feel as well.
What actually happened, where are we, and where do we need to go from there? And that's, so that's, and I, so we could, we can all talk, too, about what I've got there.
So, would the election board be the, for the state?
The election board, I think we better be the auditor-inspector over that, because that's their area of governance, yeah.
And where's their officer?
That's why I have it on.
I'm currently good behind my keyboard now.
Because before we did this, like I said, I talked to the county election board, and I also got with the state election board, and both of them have the same message for them.
Yeah, because we did check on it before we did that.
Well, and I will tell you, as somebody new to the game, when that first got brought up to me by Mick Dodson, and I got an email from him, and I looked, and I looked at the online version of the town code, and I went, "Okay." But there, I know Brittany had told me, "Oh, no, there was this that had taken place." This does exist, but it's, that's not what sits online. Somebody goes right now and says, "Try out town code," and you go to the town website, you don't see that either.
Well, that's what...
And that creates a, that creates an area of problem, when we've got, you know, one thing says this, and one thing over here says something else. We've got to get...
Well, that's what I've been saying for the last several months, we need to update this code, get it filed down the county.
Correct.
And that way, we're all within.
So, just the last thing, I already told you that packet five is some correspondence that I wanted to freely share with you guys, and I did get his permission. But the last thing I wanted to just bring up is, our town secretary cannot be our town clerk. I've been saying this. It's in our ordinance. It's still that way. But I also would like to take a minute to question, and I know you guys probably won't have this answer, but I want y'all to be aware of it. This is the only position that does not declare if it's an appointed or an elected position. So, I think that's something also we need to put on our, that's a crazy problem.
Do we know, is it appointed or elected?
It's right here. It's in your packet, number four.
Four or five?
Four.
Five is the correspondence.
So, that's it.
Do we now, once you're down on the board, put the order, do we know, is it a registered appointment?
Does it be updated when you have...
That's, so, I paid $265 for the town paper by paper, 260-something pages, and that was what is from that.
How about the one Stephen's got there?
Oh, I see.
Well, all I have is that. Yeah, I'm looking at that, too.
Oh, and I did have just some other correspondence. I just wanted to turn over to you as well.
For me?
Yes, just for you.
Have I been served? That was going on, or am I... I may not be here.
It's more of, so you understand what, why this has gotten to where it is. Some naughtiness. Thank you.
No action at the time of board's gonna check into things that happen on the next month's agenda.
Uh, sure. I, yeah, I moved no action on...
We can't really make an action. And so, I would like to add, well, we're still discussing...
We can still add that to that.
So, in the future, I actually did request to be added to the agenda to discuss. And so, putting me under residents to address the board, that's a little confusing, because that's free to me anyway. In the past, whenever I was added to the agenda, it was, I was under my own, you know, residents under their own number, so if there was something you guys wanted to vote on, you could. The way it ran today, if there was something you wanted to vote on, I don't think you would legally be able to.
We should bring it up in your business.
Well, you can bring it up in your business, but you can't pick actions.
But there's nothing to do. Yeah, there's nothing.
Bring up a new business on the record and put it on next agenda.
Correct.
Number six, ordinances, 6-1-1 mileage compensation.
Are we not doing this next month, as we said? Yeah, so, no action on it.
And why are we doing no action on it?
Can't change your...
So that we can put it in the paper and all that? Yep, I just wanted that said out loud.
Number seven, miscellaneous, 7.1, consideration, discussion, action on town hall internet options that were tabled from August 5th of 2025.
So, unfortunately, I don't have any update on this. I talked to COTC. I talked to Centrenet, and they are willing to give us, as a municipality, the residential pricing on their internet, which would be $82 a month for a gig, $40, $45, I think, a month for half a gig. I talked to COTC, and they're willing to give us 100 megs down for free. I talked to a gentleman by the name of Steve, who's trying, who's putting together a proposal for me to bring to you guys. He might be able to get our library 100 megs for free as a separate network. So, that way, you guys wouldn't have to share it. You guys wouldn't have to worry about splitting the bandwidth. Each would get their own 100 megs down. If we can do that, that would be amazing. He's also putting together, in the proposal, the opportunity to possibly get more of a multi-line phone system, because I know you guys were complaining about if one person's on the phone, and you need to call for something else, then you have to wait. This way, you know, there could be a couple different lines that would, all the town hall line would all ring to all the phones. And then, if you need to pick up another phone call, you could just switch to one of the other lines and dial out. And that would be for the library as well as town hall. So, I'm just waiting to get that proposal back from him to bring to you guys. So, unfortunately, for tonight, I have no news yet.
No action tabled next month?
Yep, if we could table it for next month, hopefully, I'll have something then. And I think they actually came in today, wasn't he talking, they were gonna come in and kind of review what we use and don't use?
Yeah, but she asked about the eventual line that they found when they're looking at our account. We contacted them. They're supposed to be getting back to us on what's going on with that.
Great.
7.2, consideration, discussion, action on who approves the agendas before they are posted, tabled from August 5th of 2025.
We talked last time at the meeting about when they're having, like, a shut-off date for everything that needs to be put on the agenda, to be put on the agenda by a certain day, and then to be able to give it to you guys, to whoever we need to, to have it looked over, and then sent back to us. I was talking to John. We were talking in the office about what his schedule would look like, or what we would think would give us plenty of time. To get the agenda together for the next month would be like a cutoff date, would be the 15th of the month. And then, that would give you until the next Monday for all of you guys, because of your different schedules and all over the place. It'll give you guys enough time to look at the agenda, see if there's any corrections that need to be made, and then get back with us. Of course, if, like, the public or anything needed something added, within that amount of time, we can add it if we need to, as far as the board is concerned. Then that way, if you guys get it to us by the 22nd, it'll already actually be a perfect, ready-to-go way before the posting time. And then, it'll even give us enough time to post it the four or five days in a row that you guys have requested.
And so, then, that will give us time to be able to put the agenda together, give it to Stefan for review. And then, we would, we would need to have that response from you, Stefan, then, within days. I like it.
Yeah. I think that works a lot better.
And then, us as board members, too, it's like, "Oh, I wanted to get this on the meeting." We know if we have time or not. It's not like, "Hey, Brittany."
Yeah.
So, we're gonna do, like, the 15th as a cutoff date? And then, we'll give it to you until the following Monday. I know the 15th is gonna fall on a different day or whatever. It could be a Thursday, or Sunday, or whatever, but...
And so, you give it to us board members by the following Monday?
Yeah. Well, you guys, we'll give it to you on the 15th. And you guys have until the following month, like, the following Monday. Maybe we should say 5 days later.
Yeah, I think it'd be, four or five days redo it. Because if that Monday is 15th, we're talking the 22nd before they definitely have to send us something.
Yeah. And then, if we, so, say we have it on the 15th, we get it to you guys that next Monday, say it's the 18th, then would we be able to post that by the 25th, guaranteed?
Yeah.
Awesome. I like that.
If we stick to those, every sketch.
And I know there will be exceptions. Zero will be a time is when things happen, but...
Anything other discussion on that?
Consideration of motion.
I move that we set a policy within the board that we will be given the option to add to the agenda on the 15th of the month, and we will have until the following Monday to add to it, so that it can be given to our municipal counselor for legal repeal.
Sandy, second.
James, yes. Nathan, yes. Richard, yes.
Discussion, consideration, action on town hall office equipment. First grant is computers.
This was one we tabled from last month, right?
Yep. This is the grant.
It is.
Yeah. So, not, there's not really any government grants right now, because it ended up this year, so... But there are some corporate grants, and I'm still looking into them. Nothing really, it's like $1,000 here, $1,000 there. So, Microsoft has an interesting one, but we can't apply for it till next year. But they will, I forget what the dollar amount is, but it's, they give us almost all their software free. And they're, I know you don't like it, but, I mean, it is free, along with equipment, so...
I think last thing we were talking to, there was a place in Oklahoma City that we might be able to get some free stuff from.
Dell. I looked into Dell, too. Dell, I gotta call a different person now, because I'm not very helpful, but...
Dell?
But I think Dell, like, I'm gonna call their corporate office in Dallas. And I have my head, but, let's see what I can get from them. But it seems like if we're gonna get any significant grants, we're gonna have to be from corporations, not from the government. So, I'm still working on it.
Yeah, Walmart, Walmart has a grant, too.
Walmart is $1,000.
$1,000. $1,000.
That's a laptop.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of those. I mean, there's a lot of those that aren't even, they're really not even considered grants. They just...
Donations.
Yeah, they'll donate. Target has one, Best Buy. I actually got the name of the guy, and I talked to him a couple times. Best Buy has a pretty good deal, where they'll, whatever we buy from them, they'll match, so...
Doesn't Walmart have a grant? Like, is it Dollar General?
Dollar General has a grant, yeah.
I did not expect that. Pretty sure we don't want Dollar General to pay us.
Well, they give money. They give us a grant.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll be... So...
Yeah. So, we're still looking on that.
Yeah. I'll have something more set in stone next.
Next month, yeah, we can.
How about the software subscription, Microsoft 360 or Utilize Google WordPress?
All right. So, I have been doing some homework, and I have some hard copies here for everyone, and I have some extras for the people. I also have set up on the TV a horrible, horrible swap. All right, so, we're just gonna have to live with this for now, you guys. So, basically, what I've been looking at is, I talked to John and Brittany, and Jeanne Lee, too, as to what they use for the softwares in the office, and how we can better use this to help improve the marketability. So, what we currently use is, we have the Microsoft 365 family subscription. So, with the Microsoft 365 subscription, we get, you know, your Word, Excel, PowerPoint, Outlook, but we also get things that, a lot of things we don't use. Clipchamp is a video editor. Microsoft Designer is a graphic design software. I don't even know for sure what we don't use. What I do know for sure is, we use Word, Excel, PowerPoint, and maybe Defender. Maybe. So, we're paying currently $130 a year for this, so we're up to $10 a month. What we get is, you get up to six people. They each only get 1 terabyte of personal storage. But the biggest problem is, it says that you can share a Microsoft 365 family with five other people in your household. So, we really should not be using this. What I would like to do instead would be to have us use Office 365 for business facing... What I would like to do instead would be to have us use Office 365 for business basic. There's $6 a month for users. I would ask for five employees, our four town employees, and an administrator account. This would keep the Word, Excel, PowerPoint that we're used to. We could still use Outlook as an option if we decide to, like we can now, but it would give us some more options with OneDrive, it would give us Microsoft Exchange and SharePoint and Teams. The things about those is, Exchange, we could actually start having business class email and calendars through Outlook if we wanted to go that route. SharePoint would be amazing, because what it is, it's a secure cloud file sharing. So there's no more of, we have to have employees on the weekends driving around packets. They could literally just upload the files, email it to us, we would have a password, we would type in the password, and get all the reports we need. And if we still wanted a hard copy, we could just drive to town hall and get one. But we wouldn't, I mean, they wouldn't have to do that on the weekend just to bring a packet to our doors. Teams, there's a lot of online trainings that uses Teams as one of the options, so they would give us an account to use it for that. Why would we should use this instead? Because we're keeping Word and Excel that we're used to, it's giving us a few more options utilized, and we're not violating Microsoft's terms and conditions before they come after us and say, we have to do it anyway. So that's going to be for basically $6 a month per user for $360 a year. What I would also love to add is Google Workspaces. Right now, we use a Google account, we use, a free account that gives us Gmail, Drive, Google Docs, and Google Sheets. What we could use instead, what I would love to have is Google Workspaces Plus. So this is gonna be $22 a month per user. It would give us, it would keep the Gmail that we're used to, but it would give us a countoftryon.com email address. Each user would have five terabytes of data, so five times the storage. We'd still have Docs and Sheets that we use now for like our agendas, our shared on Google Docs. It would give us Google Chat and Google Meet, which is another team messaging that all employees could use to instant message. And it would give us Google Sites, which is a website builder, already included in the cost of that, so we would not need to keep paying somebody else externally for a website also. It would give us two-step verification, so if somebody needs to go and log into their email to get a bid for the town, it's a little, it's a lot more secure. They would actually have to go get the code, type it in, somebody couldn't just, you know, sneak into town hall, type, not that they would, but, and get it. It would give us Google Vault, which is a huge thing for document retention. We could have employee handbooks in the vault. When we have a new version, we could save the old version, and we could see what the differences are. Emails could be saved with retention rules, and we could search and export it. And it would give us some group-based policy controls. Basically, there's no reason that Brandon needs to see the town financials. There's no reason that, say, our town clerk needs to see utility maps. We could actually separate that out, so people aren't bogged down by everything. So those are some of the benefits of it. It would give us those retention policies, we could use the cloud apps to help the community a lot more, because it's a lot more collaborative, and we can use it on our computers and mobile devices. Some of the things that we could do, we could actually create our own custom maps with our own water meters marked. So Brandon comes in new, and he says, okay, you need to go read the meters, he could actually bring up that map, and you can see on there, I actually marked where my water meter is at home with a note on there that it's just the east of the driveway. They could have one of those for the whole town in one layer, they could have all the water lines in a separate layer, that they could just access, and anybody new could just give it, be given access to it, and see where to go. Obviously, it wouldn't be that easy, or else, you know, Brandon wouldn't be sitting here. But.
But Mark, we're gonna shut off, start everything else.
But shut offs everything. We could even make notes on there, so-and-so has a gate code to go and get the meter reading, it could be right there on the map. And again, with those policy controls, we can control who can see it. We could actually use forms, we could have like an instant response form, I put this one together in five minutes, so it looks horrible, but you know, we could actually have a thing, there was a water leak on North Oklahoma caused by Centrenet diggers, here's the people who are contacted, here's the location of it, and we can have that record so that if something, or where was it, is this in any way related? Finally, we could actually use it to build a website with links that can be connected to those forms. It can be connected to calendars, custom calendars for the community, things like that. This My Town that I put together took me an hour to do. We can have Google Forms that people can go under a website, click a button, and report a problem that way to us, without even having to call town hall. And we can have that set to go email to the specific people. Did it not have my things on there? Yep. Sorry, I'm great at public speaking, as you can tell. So together, I really think we could use both of these together, because it would give us the Microsoft, Excel, and Word that we're used to, it would give us the SharePoint to securely transfer the, you know, reports and files amongst each other, along with the Google email that we're currently using, but have it be a lot more familiar look, we could have shared calendars for employee time off, for community events, things of that nature tied to a website, as well as, you know, maybe even we would have a domain that we can even have our own YouTube channel that we could post our videos online, instead of residents having to. So what I would ask would be for five users for Microsoft. It would be the town clerk, utility clerk, their operator, and the library, and an administrator account. For the Google Workspaces, I would want the same four employees, along with the fire chief, that way we could include the fire department in if there is an incident that has to be, what they need to deal with, five board members, and then again, an administrator account. So that'd be 11 people for that. So how do we pay for this? Here's the big ask. So if we were to combine this together, it would cost a total of $272 a month or $3,200 a year. That is not insignificant. However, talking to John a little bit with our things, we all know from all of the meetings we've had the last couple of months, that board members, we have water, trash disposal at no cost. I think it was last meeting or the meeting before, John, you said that the average water bill and trash bill in Tryon is about $72 a month, is that still correct?
Yeah.
If all five of us board members volunteer to pay our water bills and our trash bills and put it towards this, it would give us $306 a month to pay for this, it would give us $1,100 a year more in case we need to add another user, or we needed to do one, two more users, we would have a little bit of work. And we could voluntarily give this up until a time when it is actually removed from the organs, which would be almost two years if we did it today. So that is what I would ask you guys as my fellow board members, if we would be willing to give up our compensation in order to help pay for this. And for the community, for the benefits of the town. Questions? I know that I threw a lot at everybody.
That's really good.
My only concern would be with Teams. Because would that violate the open meeting tag? Because you'd have four or five members of the board on at the same time. We used to at work all the time.
So what we would have to do is, I would prefer that we would use Google Meet as our chat messaging, and we would keep Teams only if we needed to log into like an online training. Google Meet would be for the people in question, but then we would have to adapt a policy that if we're instant messaging people, we would have to do board members one-on-one, just like we do now with the texts that we've changed since we've started the new board. You know, we would have to please ourselves and not have a group chat. But it's no more than having a group text, which, you know, the last couple of months, we've stopped doing that, and we've shown that we can not do it. But I'm one of paying their fine, so I'm gonna shut my mouth now, quit that one.
I have a question. So I'd be able to do like work orders, and then I could text them to Brandon?
We could even set up, so we could set up a Google Form for the work order, to where you would go in and fill out the form, and when you would submit it, it would automatically email it to Brandon, to yourself, to maybe if we have a board member who's still helping to keep on the utility side, automatically, without you even having to go in and do it.
So would it text, because he doesn't always.
Oh, but then he would get the notification on his phone.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
Would there be a way, once it gets emailed out, would there be a way for documentation to refill on it? Like when we give, when we hand out work orders? Like if we have to go take the trash can or whatever, we have them write that it's been delivered and signed in?
So could it send it to?
Then we could do it on that, we could just keep it on that form, you know, here's the work order, when was it submitted, who was it submitted by, when was it received, acknowledged, and then when was it completed?
And that would be on all three, like there'll be a way for all three? Here it is, okay.
Yep, it just, the form wouldn't be complete until that last step got through. So, and so what I've done.
Would you have that? I got a question, so what are you already paying for what you've got?
So what we're paying for right now is the Microsoft 365 Family account, which, as even as a government business, we really shouldn't be, the terms of the Microsoft Family account is that it can be used by up to six members within your household.
I just want the cost.
That is, right now, we're currently paying about $10.83 a month for that.
And the new one, and the new one would be how much?
The new Microsoft one would be $360 a year, as opposed to $130. And then the Google Workspace would be a lot more expensive, combined with the Microsoft would be about $3,200 a year.
Okay, well, I guess what I was getting at, so if you're going to cancel the first one that you're using now, you've got that amount.
A little bit of, yes.
A little bit of it, or all of it?
So currently, what we use in Microsoft Family is about a third of the Microsoft Business Plan a year.
Right, not really to offset, but to help.
You would have it all, just it wouldn't, it would be a little bit, because what was she saying? Yeah. It's not a significant, that's all.
Yes, so the Microsoft one is not taken up again, the Google Workspace is very much is.
But it has a whole lot.
It does, in fact.
Y'all could utilize.
And back to her point, the 365 Family is technically not to be used in this manner anyway. And if they call us out on it, they're gonna kick us off of it anyway.
Right.
Where's, where's the budget, because like.
How are we gonna pay the extra money?
Where's the yearly budget? I hadn't even got to see it.
Where do we have the budget posted?
The budget was posted on the door, it stayed up there until it fell off, and I just didn't wait.
Okay.
It was posted when it was asked to be posted, and I just recently.
We all just discussed it again last night.
Make copies of it?
Yeah. And I don't know how great my internet service is gonna be here, but like I said, I spent about an hour at home and came up with My Town. And like I said, I don't know how great this is gonna run on my Wi-Fi, off my phone. And I would like to thank our resident, Mrs. Eagle, for this picture, I totally stole this from when she did the flag raising. But it can even go so far, if I can get to the preview mode, to where you see that reported problem, it's already set up to where we can actually, ha! It will actually bring up a form, what kind of problem are you reporting? Is it a water leak? Is it a road issue? Is it a question for town hall? We can set, we can have a link to it directly to our library's webpage with just a click. And I know we've been needing to update our website so badly. And so this is something that we could do without having to pay Blue Sky, is it Blue Sky we pay for, or Bluehost? Yeah, so our web host, we wouldn't have to pay anymore, because we'd already be paying it with Google. And so, yeah, this is gonna run really, really slow, but you know, it's completely dynamic forms, you know, I have it set up, so the questions that you report a water leak, it asks you questions about the water leak. If you're reporting a road issue, it asks you about potholes or road obstructions. And this is something that we can put on our website that you guys could report to us, and it would automatically email us again, just like if somebody from town hall did it. And so then, before we even come into work, you'd already know, there's a water leak on North Oklahoma to deal with, so. And I know you guys in the back can't see this, and I'm so sorry, I don't, I could not find any way to publish this for you guys to see, this is just on my personal Google account, and so that's why everything is My Town instead of Tryon, so. But then you would put in the date, you know, you put what kind of water it is, it's a water issue, you would just click that it's a link.
Pretty neat, wow, yeah.
Maybe. This is why we need better internet. Yeah, it's not gonna work, but you guys can see the point, so.
We're making lists longer than just the two of you, we may have sewer backup or road things, whatever.
Yep, and so basically, the way the forms work with the dynamic is, you basically put in the questions, and then you just set which questions are in response to which answers. It's something that you would set up as you build the form. So we can easily go in and add a different one.
Or you put there others, other issues they could say maybe isn't.
Yep. And until our website is up, this is something that you guys could use now, if somebody calls in, you could just go in, click, 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 it's done. So. Really dumb, this doesn't work.
So Jenna, is that the only option? Is the water, y'all paying your water bill, or is there anywhere?
There is, I mean. There, I remember from when we did the budget, that there is flexible room for it.
Yeah, there is.
But this is something that we can take this turmoil about board members and their compensation, and we can use it, and we can turn it into something that's positive for the town, and it can help you guys with your day-to-day work better, it can help you guys with the way that the town is set up to serve you guys, and we can turn something that has caused so much strife into something very positive and very productive.
May I say something? I've been sitting back here listening to the discussion and what's offered with extra money that would, if the board members would give up their free water, there's no brainer, it's a good solution. I think you really should consider that, the town has a problem with financial needs anyway. And if you can provide something that would help the town, and help the board members, help the clerk, I think that's a good thing to do. And it can be solved very easily if the board members would agree to pay the water bill. That's it.
I have no problem with it, I said it last month, I didn't have a problem.
Well, I don't feel right making any motions or anything on it, so I'm just gonna keep my mouth shut in this part, so, because this was my idea.
So.
And I'll make the motion that we do the exchange with the free bills to cover, we're gonna wind up doing it anyway, at some point anyway.
And let's figure what, if we do the white ones are on the website too, that's even more money that could go into that as well.
Is it water garbage and sewer? Or just water and sewer?
I think it's big water garbage and sewer.
I thought it was.
It's being a general comp.
Yeah, every, I.
But this here, though, this is just, whether or not we wanna go with this plant here or not, are we gonna give up something to?
Right, that's what I'm saying. We surrendered the general comp to help pay for the bills, to pay for this.
The only question I would have is, it's state law, local ordinance, and also state constitution says that they can't change any compensation, so how do we address that?
Because we would.
Can we get the water bill and just send a check back in for it?
We would pay it like normal, because we are not, we are not being, having this compensation taken away by ordinance, we are voluntarily doing it for the betterment of the town as a whole. Until.
Is there something in the writing that needs to say that? Like should they like sign on a piece of paper?
That I'm gonna leave up to our legal counsel.
I think it would be, yeah, I mean, I address this, Jenna and I talked about this, I guess not. Yeah. So as it turns out, the way things work, yeah, being that the town ordinance has been amended to provide the provision that says, in exchange for, on board, you get the bar bill up to, up to $300, but I think that wasn't even in the actual ordinance, even though that was the understanding. And so, Richard's correct in the sense that we can't by board fiat through a vote of board members amend the town ordinance. But what Jenna and I had did discuss is, if the board members wanna take the position that we are willing to forego as a board, that's a matter the board can vote on, and a majority decision would govern, and they can all say, but this is what we're gonna go do to help to forego. Basically, it's like saying, I'm gonna decline the money, or my pay, whatever. And so, yeah, you guys can do that, because that's not, you're not modifying or amending the town code, you're just declining. code, you're just declining that benefit that's offered until such time as whether that's gonna come up as a vote matter or not, to amend the code later, that's a whole other ballgame for you guys. But that's something you guys can't do, yes. And then it might be a good idea just to, whether it's memorialize the minutes or anybody signing, but so we kinda know where it is. But I think that's a matter that you guys can vote on, and that would be effective, and it's not a violation of any statute or whatever.
Are you saying do it as individual or as a whole?
I think that, well, I mean, look, to be candid, you could turn around, and I think that you guys individually could all say, yes, I'm going to, yes, I'm going to, somebody can say, no, I don't want to. How you all wanna handle it, if you wanna make that a matter of a board vote and let the board members vote on that matter, whether to all do that or not, that's a whole other ballgame too. Does that make sense? I mean, it's like, you can...
That's a definite measure.
You can skip the cat different ways. But yes, so in other words, you could all say individually, Sandy says yes, Richard says yes, Jim says, you know, you could all do it that way. Or somebody, I think, could turn around and say, hey, look, I just made a motion that as a board, we just agree that all board members are going to do this, and then you can have your vote like you do, and then three, two, four, one, five, oh, whatever, whatever that board vote would govern. And if it got declined, you could still say, well, I'm not gonna decline, that's what I'm saying, I mean, there's different ways to get there, but.
I think it would look a lot better, just with the public and some of the problems we've had in this town, if we choose to do it or not do it as a whole, and do it all united, as opposed to individually.
So it is Article 14, Section 1-56, where it does state the title.
Thanks.
Yes, you're welcome.
But I think the still on the question now, though, is before we get that, because that's actually utility part of it, is whether or not we wanna do this.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I would make a motion. Set that, get this set up, you guys should make sure we're today.
Make the motion.
Yes. You need to say it loud. Well, I did the first, Evan.
Did you make the motion?
Yeah, I'm making the motion, and we get this set up and abandon the one we're not supposed to be using.
Didn't you second?
Ah, James second.
I'd vote no, because it's on the utility agenda, you can't do it, no.
No, it's a soft one.
I should just...
Getting the soft one.
Sandy, yes.
I think the motion was to adopt the Google Workspaces and to adopt the Microsoft plan and to get rid of the family plan that we're not supposed to be using.
Right.
I'm voting yes then. That water's hanging, put a vote on that for the other utility side.
Yep.
Data retention?
Yes, so data retention. So I have for you guys all, what I would like to do for Town Hall is, we have a problem right now of when we have files and things that need to be saved, they're saved on a personal computer, or they're saved in a board member's memory, or such. So what I would like to do would be to set up what we would call a network drive. What I would ask for would be $400. It would include a bay that would just sit on a shelf, be connected to our Wi-Fi, and then the Town Hall computers would be connected to it through the network. There would be two drives that would be in those bays, they would be set up in what's called a configuration, to where if one of the drives goes out, the other one still has all the data in it. It's kind of as a redundancy measure, so that we'd be getting two drives of four terabytes each, so that we would basically end up with one set of redundant drives, and we'd have a maximum of four terabytes, and it would be through the network. This would be if Brittany's on vacation one day, and there's something John needs, he can actually go onto that network drive and save it. We can set things up for auto-backup of our town computers in case something horrific happens in a computer meltdown, we can still have the information that we need. And this would cost $400, and I know that's within the purview of our town clerk to buy, I still wanted to bring it through everybody and get everybody's opinion on it.
For vote?
For...
Vote storage for $400 for the...
Yeah, so for $400, $200 approximately for the actual structure itself, and within it has the Wi-Fi capabilities and everything, and then the two four-terabyte drives are about $85 a piece, I believe. So everything altogether would be $400.
Is there any way of doing it two separate locations?
There is, but not with the internet we have right now.
The reason I ask was back in...
To get offsite storage.
Thirty, forty years ago, when I was working for Deerfield Police Department, they had their entire records on file, and they had a three-backup system. Every two weeks, they'd change the backup. Lightning struck and took out two of the backups.
That is the...
If there wasn't one at the bank, they would've lost a million dollars worth of work.
Google vault.
That's what you Google is for.
So the Google would give us a cloud offsite retention, the capabilities, and if, like Heather said earlier, if YouTube goes down, or, you know, Judgment Day happens and all the computers go offline, we'd still have our local storage as well, so.
And then you can pull that for a recovery.
Yep.
I'll make motion, we purchased a set of network storage drive.
Sandy seconds.
Nathan, yes.
Richard, yes.
Yay. I abstained, it was my idea, so.
I do have one question, but in regards to all of this, do we have a backup power system? The power box?
So both of the computers are, do have an uninterruptible power supply that they're plugged into. I don't know how long they are, if it's five minutes or 15 minutes, but we, that way for brownouts and just the quick flashes of power, they do have those UPS protections.
We do have one in the house about that big.
Yep. Yep, you should see all the ones that we have at our house.
Fifteen minutes or something.
Whenever the power goes to our house, there's alarm screaming. It's one of our dogs, we love it.
A lot, man.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we didn't, we didn't start looking at that.
Yep, so that was one of the first questions I asked, and they went, huh?
All right, consideration, discussion, action on clock in and out procedure.
Just part of our handbook and stuff, we've gotta get better over clocking in and out. There's been too many handwritten, handwritten punches and outs, and the auditor frowns upon that. So we just need to make sure that, one, the policy needs to be written, but that we need to remember to clock in and out our towns every single day.
Is part of it because we don't have a Town Hall right now?
Um, no.
Or they used to have the clock at the other building, and you could actually get in the room?
Yeah, no, everybody has free access to this, they just work on it.
I forgot my copy of the handbook. Is it specified in the handbook that we need to?
Um, I don't, I think it's one of those things that's really great, there's not really, it's not detailed, like it should have like an actual procedure.
Are the auditor had said that it's imperative?
Oh, yeah.
And time off forms in that case.
Yes, so we're sort of pulling the list as well, yeah.
Are you looking for any action on this, or was this just kind of...
Um, just so you guys know that we need to start working on it, that it needs to, it needs to be done. I'll probably put on the, we can do no action right now, but I'll probably have that actual policy. I'm trying to get ahold of some towns around us, just to see what theirs look like, or like the board of each other, or whatever, just to see how to write one up that might work for us.
Then you could put that on next month.
Yep.
Okay.
Seven point five, consideration, discussion, action on government card.org system.
Um, I'm not for sure if we were able to bring the printouts over here, in case it was coming up with its own issue, um, so far as, um, yeah, this is actually, would you grab that?
Go.
Now, I can give it.
Can we discuss you a bit?
Yeah, I did.
Um, so it's like for your town, so, but I don't know if you wanna come back to this, let John forget and come back, it's just a new parent option for...
Yeah, let's go on. Come back, David.
Come back then. Seven point six, consideration, discussion, action on website update.
I don't know what you guys, if we're gonna be using the Google Workspace with the Google sites, then we're gonna have to go start building one, basically. And so I don't really have an updated this time, other than the fact that with this, once we get this, we can start talking about what we want on it, you know. What I would maybe ask you guys, anybody who's involved, is Google some of our other channels, see if their website is, if you like their particular website, it might be something that we can emulate and make our own, so. I mean, I think Manford's is a great one, I think Chip Che, I think, has a great one. Sorry, the ones with Christmas, that's right. Yeah, yeah, you know, they've got a really neat site, so. Sam Springs has a great one, but if you wanna be careful, because they actually pay for a website builder to do it, so. But at this point, no action.
Well, if we're gonna be doing all this pushing over it, just do something simple like put a splash screen on it, so somebody logs into it, checks backs in.
Coming soon under construction.
Yeah, we're changing, we're changing stuff up.
Yep.
Things are changing. And that way, everybody does, okay, I need to come back and look and see, you know, find it and check it. At least that way, we made an update to it, so it doesn't look like we're abandoning it, and people go, okay, there's stuff being modified.
Oh, yeah.
Action, seven point seven, consideration, discussion, angle funding update, that John said?
Yeah.
Seven point eight, consideration, discussion, action on use of the police truck.
I think we were gonna ask for some public input on this, weren't we, before we made a policy on...
Is that what Jimmy had said?
Is there any public input on us using the old police truck for the town's use?
Is that, yeah, is that the, by police truck, it's the code enforcement truck? That was the police, then code enforcement? Yeah, no, I think it's amazing, yeah. I agree.
I think we're gonna use it, it just needs to be used in a way that, you know, like if we need to make the bank deposits, stuff like that, where we're not, you know, we don't have to pay the mileage, we do have them use a vehicle to take, you know, our vehicle to take to the bank or post office, or where we do, so.
Was there something wrong with the fog? They had stopped assistance on it.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I believe we'll just, yeah.
Yeah, I'll let...
On the black coat, just the scanner would automatically start up.
Yeah.
And if you didn't manually shut it off, so he just couldn't power.
So the radio is disconnected?
Just the scheme, not the stuff for the twenty, the power and all that.
You're all about that, cap.
It's the only thing, the diffuses that are up under the middle right there, and that's strictly border, well, I pulled the one strictly for the scanner, that don't come on.
The only thing I do will say is, on utilities, I have procedures for that, is you're gonna be muddy and dirty, and you were destroying a truck one day, getting in that truck with a dirty clothes, wet clothes.
I do believe, I do believe it's got the wood mats, the weather check, or whatever it is, it covers it, you wouldn't have to worry about the carpet.
I gotta say, them back in there.
I was gonna say, that truck would make my job a lot easier when it comes down to hauling stuff, because there's not a camper on the back of it, you know, it's got a second truck bed, it would just make a lot of my job a lot easier. And it's got AC in it, and, you know, it's hot up there.
It's not hot now.
Yeah, it's still hot.
Thirty pounds of body armor on every day.
Each of them, but yeah.
So I know I'll have it. These last two weeks have been pretty nice.
Yeah, but when you get out in it and you're working...
I do, every day.
You sweat and you...
I wear thirty pounds of body armor.
Well, the fact is, he's a town employee, he should have an AC.
Yeah, and that's what we need to get the utilities fixed, but I haven't seen it yet.
But I mean, even still, Stephen, or even still on that, the utility truck, it's got that topper on it. I cannot use the bed like that, I'm able to use a picket.
But we have a trailer.
Can I take the, can I take the topper off?
Can the topper come off?
Yeah, I take it off, that's okay.
I'd be okay with this, I'll just store it somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be put inside the tensile of the shop.
Plus, we have the trailer too.
That's the utility side, we're gonna get on that.
Yep, we'll talk about that.
Didn't get my checks to speak.
All right.
I do think, I didn't get my checks to speak, it's John.
They just opened it up.
So, yeah. On the truck, y'all tabled it, and you said you wanted to have a public hearing.
Public opinion.
We wanted to open it up for public opinion.
A public, okay. So what happened with that?
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, that's what we're asking for.
I'm sorry, I had a emergency with my dog.
Well, y'all fast forwarded a few, so we kinda jumped.
Yep.
Yeah.
So does anyone have any reason why we shouldn't use it?
Is it paid for?
Yes.
Jim, would you like to make a motion on what we should do with the truck, or some kind of restrictions on it?
Well, I think we, I think it's city-owned, we own the tow truck, so I think we need to use it instead of just sitting there, letting it sit there. Mice and everything else are gonna be in there, start, you know, wearing tear off, that's a lot on vehicles just letting it sit there.
I'll use it, I'll take care of it.
But I think it needs to be used by whoever's gonna be going to the bank or post office, start using it for that.
Yeah.
If you're gonna use it for utility side, keep it clean. I don't wanna see that truck destroyed in two weeks, simple as that.
You guys are gonna need to make a mail run, be sure to let him know that morning, so he knows.
Yeah, cool, and you can get like a...
What do you need to have a back bike, so you guys...
You can get a big thing. Throw it in when you know you have a nasty job.
So I think we just need open...
And testing.
What's that?
And water testing, I'll have to take it.
Yeah, water test, whatever, I mean, if you need to go store it, that way we're not paying anyone anymore for mileage, so. Because we have a city vehicle, if we have to go train it, whatever, that vehicle fail.
Just put it in general city use.
Now, what, there is one thing I like to look at, is getting that bed fixed on it, getting that big old dent of it. And that up for city use as needed.
My second.
Sandy, yes.
And we're gonna go back to consideration, discussion, action on government card.org system.
Okay, the packet that I gave you, this is a new GovCard, it's like an online payment, but it's also like an house payment. We don't have a way right now for people to bring their cards in to pay in person, whether that's for the utility side or the Town Doc book or these stuff. So they got ahold of us last week sometime, and went over this, this is their power point that they gave us. It's more or less just, I use TPG, it's a payment processing group or whatever, to take police department payments. John uses PayPal, their charge fee is 3%, and the customer has to pay for it, that's more or less what TPG charges as well. And it's 3% of the total amount of whatever the transaction is. From my understanding, this is the same that they charge for this one as well. But they will also, if we sign up for them, we'll try to find that amount. I don't see the payment worked down.
So I looked on their website, and it looks like, what is it, up to 3% for any charge that's under, is it $60 or $70?
I would say it's $70.
If it's above $70, it's a 3% charge. I know we use PayPal now for the utility side, however, according to PayPal, we're not supposed to be passing the transaction fees on to the customers. So what I'm wondering is, is there any way we can also kinda see what like SwerSpace, or I know there's another one too, to kinda compare with the GovCard?
Yeah, we did use, uh, for the house.
And then if it's a case of fees, we could always make it a convenience fee. You can't go to the DMV, or, sorry, Tag Agency, utility bills, you wanna pay with the card, so many of them saying, look, if you're gonna use your card, it'll be few bucks more.
Now, Steve, I've been running into that a lot lately. In fact, Burke and City Hall, I had to go in and make a payment, I used my card, and they charged me the uptick of what they, extra.
So if we, whatever way we do, we wanna make sure that if we use something that's not these guys, that's explicit, that we add a convenience fee to pay... that we add a convenience fee to pay online, instead of you need to figure out your two percent extra to pay it online. So that would be my only input on this.
I agree.
Yeah, we'll check into the, the payment crypto on this.
Yeah.
And then we'll look at other ones.
Put it back on.
Would.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't happen here, the the machines that we would have to get, like purchase for in-house, for them to swipe the card. So we also need that process as well.
And they take online too, so we could, you like to pay my bill on the website, and I'll go right to it. So I, I'd love for this, I just want to see what some other competitors offer or start to use the things.
Do it like we're missing three digits.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll pull this back together and get the other one.
Cover one of the things I told you about. Does, they give you the, when a sale deals?
Yep.
But I don't know how to.
So no action on that? Table next month. Consideration, discussion, action on a GoFundMe update.
Okay, so.
Okay.
So. GoFundMe is probably not the way to go, it's more for investors, for people who have been there, you know, people that kind of work in the [inaudible]. They do have a charity account. Not sure if we're, are we considered a nonprofit?
Yes.
You are.
So they do have a, they do have a charity way to do things through a charity, and people can give tax donation forms and that stuff. But looking a little further, there are some other, I think, better options. And I put them in here, there's, I did five different, five different ones, and what I like to do is like research these a little more, and maybe next meeting have a, like, give you a list of the ones that I think would fit us better. There's one that has no fees at all. Zippy has no fees at all, but it doesn't do as much as some of the other ones, they have a smaller fee. Like Harness, they, they will set their website, or they'll set the link for you. Get Better, it's, it seems like it could be a good one too, I just haven't researched them enough.
So why don't we put it on next month's agenda and give you more time to search it?
That would be great.
Next month's agenda.
And, and doing it, and I know we talked about doing it through Penn County Bank, and that is an option. It's just a little trickier to get, like if somebody donated more than two hundred and fifty dollars and they wanted some kind of form, you know, for taxes, it's a little, it's a little trickier, I mean, to get that, so. Where these, most of these have a form that will print out for you if you do that, like automatically, or email you. GoFundMe doesn't, like, because it's considered a gift more than it is a donation, so they don't let you, they don't give, really give you the option of getting anything for your taxes. So I'm saying GoFundMe is probably not the way to go.
Seven point nine, consideration, discussion, action on the employee handbook, policy and procedures.
We just need to schedule a date or time, or however we're, you would say, they need, they need someone working on it. We just need to set a date and time to start doing something with that.
You can handle this for me.
Or how do you want to do it? Do you want to just break it up in pieces, you know, to you guys, or like, do you want to come to the office, or what is your.
I recommend coming to your office and seeing.
I heard that.
Now, what, what days are you? Is it Wednesdays and Thursdays? What days are you available?
Anytime you want.
Okay.
Give me a call and let me know when you want me to pick stuff up or whatever.
All right.
Is that as sweet coffee and donuts? Because I could be part of that meeting.
I'll see about bringing donuts to the next meeting, next month. I used to do that all the time. Yeah. Coffee and donuts.
We used to have pizza.
Oh, yeah?
Consideration, discussion, action on the building project.
Building project. Right now, we're still waiting on the meter that was around the building. It has not been located, but with Mary Lee's suggestion, there's the property that is east of the building is actually, the fence is, needs to be moved over ten to fifteen feet to the east. About a foot or two inside that fence line is a water meter and a manhole that we would be able to hook up to. But I am trying to get hold of the, Wes talking with Sharon Slogan today, she reminded me who owns that property, or at least his father-in-law. Because in the assessor's role, we don't have contact information for him. So I will be contacting him tomorrow to get ahold of him to talk to him, to see, let him know exactly about the fence being moved, and kind of what we need to have done, and see where we can go from there, see if we need to put it on the agenda, or if he's willing to work with us or what. Right now, that water meter is what's holding us up. So as soon as we can get it hooked to water, so they can do the plumbing testing.
The pressure testing.
Yeah, the pressure testing, the building will be up and going. And plus, at the same time, after that gets done, we have to schedule with COTC to get them to come out to our building as well. So that's what's.
Let them take them along.
So that's what's, what we're working on now.
So nothing at this time.
Correct.
Any new business?
Um, just that I would like to talk next meeting about setting up a pay-per-schedule for a void request.
A rate schedule or whatever.
That we can post and publish, and everybody knows what to do with.
We need to get our ordinances.
Got the cut up?
Yep, we need to get that done, paced out.
So do we need to group together to work on it, or do we need to start bringing sections of it to each meeting, and say, next meeting, we're going to hit section one?
I know last, the last board, we were taking like chapters at a time.
We'd meet.
But we just weren't, yeah. We'd have, we'd have a work meeting, and then, yeah.
And then we'd discuss it and work on it.
Do corrections and then bring.
Did that seem to work?
Um, we only got one chapter done.
So no.
Most, most of our work meetings got canceled.
Okay.
Or they weren't really productive. So if we can actually set up work meetings and they be productive, then that's something completely different.
And that would be good, because then we could discuss, you know, with all of us.
We just got to get this done.
Yeah.
It's simple.
Is there a time this month that we can start that, with everybody's schedules? I'm out of town the week of the twenty-first, all the way to the end of the month, so it would have to be this week or next week for me. Or I could dial in by Zoom or something, if somebody else bought a computer, I could, I could max hundred of it.
I know, I can't do that too, because that's the town court, and it's during, I don't know.
When's that, next, when is that?
Uh, the third Thursday. Court day is just.
What about next week?
Sorry, so next week or the week after?
It's my work week.
What about the week of the fifteenth?
I don't know.
That'll work.
As long as it's not Thursday, it's fine.
Could you maybe email us all individually, and about maybe trying to set something up the week of the fifteenth?
Yeah.
That'll work, Tuesday, Wednesday works for me.
We know Wednesday is better, it's the seventeenth.
Would it, would it be in the evening like these meetings are?
Yeah.
Then you have either any day, any night that week works for me.
No, before you do that, I've got a question, are we ever going to do anything and decide anything on the containers? Or are we just going to wait till the building falls down, and then dig all the stuff out of it?
Put it on the agenda.
Kind of a loaded question, the other board that was here before April had approved the utility building for the.
The town with a different budget cycle, so.
I know.
I understand all that, but at the same time, we've all brought in estimates and everything else, and we just keep kicking it down the road.
Yeah, something needs to be done, because that's historical paperwork out, that is not something to be playing with.
Just got to make sure it's weatherproof and heat and stuff like that, getting there, moisture getting there.
That's why I said it's got to be a control, some kind of a control deal.
Or did you text?
I would forget what the mini's for.
I think the container itself.
Just set it at seventy, twenty degrees and then go.
So are we going with the container, or are we going to go with the shed?
Well, and that's why we're giving that.
Okay.
And, and the fact.
Because we're going back and forth on it.
You know, like I talked to him earlier today, it would be logical, even if we do them one at a time, to get two containers, put them in a space park, and then get trusses, put a roof on it, then with the door, then we can have two storage units, and we can have a garage, and we can have it right there behind the door.
Keeping tractor right there in the park that we, and road is all the way over there, just to move the porch and acres all the way back to the shop.
We've got to be careful about the [inaudible], because if we fix that parking playground, some kids playing around over there.
You wind up with basically a pole barn, but you're using the containers as the poles, you're just putting trusses on top of it, and then you're enclosing. So it could be done in steps.
You make it twelve or sixteen feet between the tool, and you could pull the truck underneath, and have protection from hail or whatever.
Right, and that's, that was my whole point.
Let's get on the agenda in next, for next meeting, if we can.
So, yeah, we can put that on there and get it figured out. Because what, I think the one that you looked up, then they have a lease, rather than straight out.
You can lease them or you can buy them already.
Well, I know one of the ones that I have, they, you could only buy it if you leased it, you never owned it.
Yeah. They're down payment, they're, you work on your lease, you actually hold it.
Right.
Or you can, you can put down three thousand dollars down.
And I talked to the Westco guy, he said, once they're loaded, they will not move them. So it has to be where we want it, and it doesn't make sense to put it down there, if we can do it right here.
Well, this is your, picture is deal is ready for next meeting.
Yep, only twenty slide PowerPoints beat. Anything else?
I didn't even know if I still have the, the Westco was the one, but like I said, the one up there on my thirty-five. You know, we're toward Frontier City, they all come out pretty close to the same price.
How's principal more one number before next month, too? If there's no more new business, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. That's it.
Sandy has.
Jenny has.
Richard does.
Nope.
Nice, nice eye.
He's like, I was waiting for a little bit. Don't make sure, dang it, I was, yeah, get out of my head, it's not safe for your knee.
Town of Tryon Board of Trustees, we're still here at the meeting, September second, twenty twenty-five, it's now seven fifty-eight PM. First Baptist Church, one twenty-two North First Street, Tryon, Oklahoma. The agenda, call order. Roll call.
Sandy here.
James here.
Jenny here.
Nathan here.
Richard here. Consideration, action, and consent agenda, approval of the minutes of August fifth.
We were attached, so, town side.
I, I do want to commend you guys for seeking out the software and stuff that makes it easy, so. I'm, I'm really, really kind of proud to see that, so. What is the cost on this subscription for this?
The last I seen it, it was, they're doing a special right now, the program, it's forty-nine ninety-nine for a year. Yeah, or they're working down to like weeks, or by month, or whatever, but.
That's a really good deal.
The more you buy, like if you subscribe to a whole year, it's a little cheaper.
I know it's, I know it's within your purview, but I would be absolutely for it. Because it seems like this makes your job a lot easier.
Absolutely, yeah. There's still, I just bought like a week's subscription, just to tweak around and see how it works. And so there's still some adjustments that need to be done, but.
There's one, they have a price though.
There's also, along with how it's grown, we have to tweak a little bit to fit our agenda, but it's also a transcript that will come with it, like for data of what was discussed, or if anybody does have questions, or whatever, that can also be printed out and attached to it as well.
And, and I love too, there's actually like a button, just like a simple export to Google Docs button, that then we can put it on Google.
Yeah, you can even do like group, uh, group chat with the, not group chats, but like, like it, kind of like a Google.
Get it right, Brittany, get it right.
The garbage, I'm sorry.
How accurate is it?
It's actually, it's actually pretty close.
Yeah.
I think it's miss, like, misspelled their names, but yeah, it's actually not too bad.
I know Google likes to put in weird words that you never say.
AI is coming a long way though, so let's use it.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes come the August fifth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second motion.
James has.
Jenny has.
Nathan has.
Three point two, approval of monthly department head report.
Did we get one?
Oh, no, yeah, so that's, that's not my fault. And I told y'all, I, you know, when I started this job, y'all wanted to work with me and make a report, and that, but I will, I would definitely get it to y'all.
Would it help to have some kind of just a form?
Training?
Yeah, I got it, it's a, it's a form.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's, yeah, he got it all, kind of, y'all approved it last quarter.
Okay, great.
That's just.
Let's just get it done before next month.
Yeah.
Next month's, make sure there's.
Yeah, all right, so then, as far as the, just with the department head, how are we at, did we get the meter readings done in today?
No, not, not fully.
Okay, what are we needing to get those done for this last month?
Basically, they poke around that side of town, that side of town.
Is that something that we can get done tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll have it done tomorrow.
Three point three, approval of monthly financial report.
What is USDA ACH?
It's a loan, it's a loan.
Okay. What is it, a loan, so we're paying on a loan?
Yeah.
What is it for?
It's a, isn't that for the, um, like, look in.
The rooms.
Yeah.
On page three, the second line down, a check for twenty-six hundred dollars to Town of Tryon, is that for the PWA reimbursement?
That is for payroll.
Yeah. So it looks like we paid on that loan twice this month, were we a little behind on it?
The.
Uh, it looks like there was a debit for it on the twenty-fifth of July, and then there was a debit for it, or was it on the first of July?
Are you talking about the payroll?
No, the USDA.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it came in, so last month's came in, in like, it came in the first of March, it's, uh, thirty-first.
Okay. And then I see there's, we paid Brittany a check for eighty-three dollars?
Yeah, that was for ink.
Gotcha. Just to kind of pay back your share of it?
Yeah.
We're going to do the financial report.
I make a motion, we approve the monthly financial reports for July of twenty twenty-five.
I'll second motion.
James has.
Jenny has.
Nathan has.
Oh, my goodness. Were you stressing, do we need to go back over it? We're making money.
Nobody in my family can believe that I'm the money man for anything, so.
Three point four, four, approval of monthly claims for July of twenty twenty-five.
Now I'm in trouble.
I make a motion, we approve the monthly claims for July of twenty twenty-five.
I'll second it.
James yes. Nathan yes.
Richard yes. Number four, consideration of items removed from consent agenda. Number five, public appearances, petitions, demonstrance, communications, and personal appearances.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
I'd like to speak.
Okay.
I wanted to say something, just something like that.
I'll wait for her.
Sharon just sent on the wrong.
Sharon?
Yes. Um, and should all know, we've had several water leaks caused by C R E C, cutting the lines, and it is real disturbing that we do not have the equipment nor the personnel to do the repairs. We have to look to our, uh, neighboring towns for support. And that's real disturbing that we can't take care of our own town. We've never been in this position before. I don't know how, how we got here, but it makes us look incompetent. And I don't know the solution, but I'm sure there is one, and we need to be finding it. Do you have any suggestions?
Well, we're waiting on for audits to be done, cause we can't apply for any grants until an audit gets done. Uh, so once they get done, we get, there's actually equipment grants that we're, we're gonna apply for, but we just have to have those audits done first.
So how long are we gonna wait? I mean, it's getting bad.
Are they, are they going back the whole six years?
Over the last four, five, six years, I think we've had four different auditors doing the books. And every one sits on the books because there's bigger towns they wanna work on first before they get done.
They get more money.
I don't know how much we're bringing in on the water bills, but we should start now doing a little bit at a time fixing those lines. We can't sit and wait for a grant. Ten years down the road.
But you, you have to understand, in order to replace massive footage of water lines, that is money that the town of Tryon does not have unless we have grants.
I think Sharon's saying is that we should at least be diligent enough to make sure we get people hired that can help us.
Well, I know that, but she was talking about replacing.
We've gone through four utility operators in the last few years too.
And they're eight months behind on issuing a license.
They're, they're questioning this, or why are we going to so many utility operators?
You know, we had.
That's the question. Why, why are we all running through so many utility operators?
Cause a lot of times they get, they get their license and they leave and get, they go back to jobs.
Which is why we're paying.
To try to keep heading.
Oh, you have nine going on.
But we had equipment, we had equipment to take care of our own town problems. We no longer have that equipment. It's been sold.
What happened to that money?
And, and, and here we sat with nothing to do anything with, and it makes us look very, very incompetent.
I agree.
We're dependent upon other towns. That is real disturbing.
Where's the money from where we sold what we sold?
And let me, let me stay there.
That's not the other board, that was Mr. Moore, and that was a long time ago.
Let me have another thing.
Sorry, Sharon.
We have not had enough audit for four years. That should have been done long ago. Now, I understand there's been problems with the ones that were hired to do the audit, they didn't follow through with it, but we just jumped from one to another, and we're not stopping anything. I understand, we are looking at a firm in Oklahoma City now.
Sorry, something.
And as of this date, we have no audit, and we're going back four years. We're supposed to have an annual audit. The town board should have been seeing that we had that done. We sat here, and, and I'm gonna go back to our town being robbed of every cent we had. The town board let that happen. We were unaware of what was happening. That put us in a very, very bad position. And here we are tonight, discussing audits, we're discussing not having the equipment, not having the, the personnel to take care of our town. This hurts me very badly. We have lived here since nineteen sixty-four, and we have never been in this position. And I know there's a lot of things that have to be taken care of. There's a lot of rules and regulations, and I understand that's very important. We need to adhere to those, but we also need to act responsibly, responsible as a board member. And I am really, really concerned about the direction we're going in, and I heard a mention of GoFundMe. You know, no one's gonna support a town that is not able to take care of themselves. We can have all kinds of GoFundmes, but no one's going to contribute to that. And, and I can understand why.
And I, I'm actually gonna be contacting the auditors to find out what's going on, cause like I said, we're all, we're all just new here. So, but I, I agree with you one hundred percent, that audit should be done every year and be on time. So, cause it's holding us up on doing anything.
I'm gonna hold you to that, getting a hold of them.
I've asked Brittany, several times now for the number. I'm not bashful.
Well, you too. The town is a business.
Which email?
And we need to take care of it.
Yeah, I got you.
Well, I did, and I wanted also add, I think.
Can we get O N L's help with getting auditors to actually finish their jobs?
So, once I get the number, I'll call the auditors myself, cause I'm like, I'm not bashful, I'm not, you know.
Well, someone needs to take the initiative and get somebody's help.
And so as soon as she gets me the number, if it's tomorrow, I'll call tomorrow and be like, hey, you know, you guys are putting us in a bind, and, you know, it should've been done already.
We certainly are here.
They weren't paid, so.
To be right being individuals of the town, but we are very concerned, and we sat and was unaware of what happened to us in the past. And now that we are aware of some things, we need to see some action. And that's very disturbing.
I will have a, I will call them this week. I, I actually get two days off, and several of them. Uh, that was my plan, was to call them this week to find out what's going on with this audit, and go from there. And let them know, hey, you guys are putting us under a lot of pressure, can't apply for anything without your, this audit, and I'll like, if I gotta talk to their bosses, I'll talk to their bosses, I don't care, I just, I'll go to food chain, so.
We would appreciate that very much. And we need to financially be supportive of our town, rather than dependent upon someone else to take care of us. That's not right. It should have never happened.
I agree, so.
So, we need to see some action on that.
I'm the one that balked back over here.
I would actually help you if you wanted to.
Well, I think that's why we have three new board members. So you guys are, we are making steps.
Yep.
Thank you for your time and consideration, and hopefully we can get some results.
I'll give you a call, hopefully this week, when I get an answer, so.
So to kind of piggyback on her, I wanted to let y'all know about Mary Ann's place is really bad, and I guess the people that are being contracted over there, so, um, what was the last place, Central, the other company that came through, they hit our line, and they did a beautiful job. Like, it looked better after they left. And in front of her place, if you guys haven't driven over there, there's tree roots, they have killed the trees, it's really bad, and there's still a lot of water on the top of the earth.
The company that was working, people, is working out by his wife to hit the water line there. I called their boss, or actually I called C R E C, and he told, he told me right then that they wouldn't be working there after this, and sure enough, they was gone after that.
Well, it's been over two weeks, and I mean, and to kind of hit on what she talked, or I think I remember brought it up, but they had this whole line from about here to the front door, and if we had pipe in our stock upgrade, boom, right there, and that we could just give it to them. And it would be a pull-out and put-in. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that, they're already, the hole's already being dug to fix a problem. It would've just been a little bit more work to put in a whole line, so.
So I, I dealt with the ones up north, I didn't do all the ones doing the bigger towns.
Well, like I said, I, I don't, I do think that the company, which, what was the company's name now that's doing internet over there, that's busting everywhere, that whoever they contracted is, they're really doing a really poor job.
And I told them that.
I mean, the roots are, I mean, I even went over there and tried to help them and talked with them, and I actually thought it was Brittany's ex, so I did, I should've introduced myself, and I could've figured that out, but it was someone else.
Yep, it was that drill company.
Anything else on utilities side, anybody to discuss?
So I don't know if emergency management is so much on the utility side, but this was something I wanted, is on my to-do. Y'all know, and I think you two know, cause I know we talked about it last year, if we don't have emergency management and we have a catastrophic event, FEMA will not look at us, and we cannot sustain a natural disaster that does something really bad to us. So emergency management should really be on the list soon.
Well, luckily, I'm a, that's my degree is emergency.
Yeah, but we, if we don't have anything set up, I mean, we're, we're gonna be screwed, and it's gonna be something that we're gonna have our hands tied, and it's gonna be done.
Like a chain of command where everybody has a certain thing to do in order for FEMA to.
And that's not on the calendars when something happens.
Well, the thing is also, there's some NIMs classes that I think the board members are required to take also, so. I don't know if you guys were that.
What is that?
Uh, I can't, goddamn, I'm so tired, I can't.
What is it?
It's, it's basically when you have disaster, if you go to FEMA's website.
Okay.
I took it back years ago.
Yeah, they're online. Pay them online.
Yeah, one hundred, two hundred, seven hundred, something like that, so. I'll get back, I'll get back with you almost.
Do we have, is that something that you can open for me to send us the class information?
Um, I can look it up.
It's all online classes, except for three hundred. Three hundred, you guys should take.
But I don't think you require that.
No, but I have all those classes, so.
Good to know. Anything else? Item six, proposal of board trustees, Town of Tryon entering into executive session in accordance with Title twenty-five, Section three oh seven, subsection D one, discussing employment, hiring, employment, promotion, demotion, disciplining resignation of any individual salary, public official, or employee. Now, before we move to our, are we able to swap the order? I would really like to, to look at our, our applicants before making them sit through all the rest of the executive session, is that something we can do?
Yeah.
We can call whichever we want. We don't need a motion or anything for it.
Okay, great.
Six one point one, John Fox, job position and pay. Six one point two, Brittany Platit, job duties, responsibility, and license. Six one three, Stefan Wright, job duties, responsibility, and license. And six one four, interview a higher utility helper.
I make a motion, we enter into executive session.
I'll second motion. James yes.
Nathan yes.
She's a singer, I was on. Hey, she was twenty-four, wasn't she, man?
We're recording again. Regular, this regular meeting for executive session.
I make a motion, we re-enter regular meeting from executive session.
I'll second. James yes.
Jenny yes.
Nathan yes.
Consideration, discussion, action on matters discussed in the executive session. John Fox, job position and pay, I move that we move John to a salary position as opposed to hourly for one thousand dollars a month, as we discussed last meeting, and we make that official.
Sandy seconds.
Nathan yes.
James yes.
Richard yes. We all are getting such a deal.
I know, we are.
And you mean your employment, not the pay?
Right.
Yeah. All right. Six one point two and six one point three, we discuss the job duties and responsibilities of the two. I think we worked out any problems we had to do. Hopefully. No further action?
Right.
No action? And last one, interview a higher utility helper. We had three people, Kevin, Kyle, and Aaron. Kyle did not interview.
No.
We had Kevin and Aaron.
That's Kevin, that's right.
Or Aaron was here and.
Kevin.
Kevin, that's right.
I'm, I move that at this time, we offer the position of our utility helper at twelve dollars an hour for approximately twenty hours a week to Aaron, I don't remember the last name, it's Neville?
Neely.
Neely, to Aaron Neely.
Sandy seconds.
James yes. Nathan yes.
Richard yes.
Mr. Neely, you get with the town clerk, and she'll let you know what you need to fill out.
Is the plan to start tomorrow?
Start whenever you want.
Oh, just kidding, yeah.
Whenever you want to start.
Coming in tomorrow, if we're gonna do the paperwork tomorrow.
Mr. Lenius, nine point one, consideration, discussion, action on offering tetanus and hemorrhage for utility operator update.
I'm very much for this.
I am too. So, um, he got a tetanus shot, because he got stung by a wasp or the hornet, so he's already got the tetanus shot, and, um, I set it up with the health department that he can go get.
Yeah, see, is that something we can offer to our new helper as well?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Do we need any action on this?
Yeah, it's already, it's already set up.
Just include the helper too.
And I had, I made it for them if they want, if they don't want it.
Or they could sign, right? That's good.
Nine point two, consideration, discussion, action, setting up a GoFundMe account.
Yeah.
Nine three, consideration, discussion, action on claims, environmental invoice, and final payment update.
Was that John's?
Yeah.
Hey, John. Too late.
We'll come back.
Right. I squirrel apparently.
No, he wants to talk to them.
I know.
So we're gonna?
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back to that.
Nine point four, consideration, discussion, action on proper service agreements needing filled out for board members' families.
I'll put that on there just to be, I guess for your, your son's residence.
My residence, I won't.
No, your son's residence, he lives there.
He can live there, but I've got the agreement. I, I will know to fill out the application when I move in town, it's my house.
And there's two building addresses, so that makes it two addresses, not one.
One rather than play state code.
No, it's two because by state code, it has its own address. By the 911 board and by the fire department here in the city has two. As you have a different address, he has a different address.
Correct, one property.
No, two addresses.
One property. Two addresses, one property.
That makes it two addresses. And he's got his own water meter.
No, he doesn't, I have water meter, it's my property, I have the water meter. I, I pay the bill for both of them. If you have an issue with it, I pay the bill for both of them.
No, you don't.
Right, no, I don't, no.
So you're paying for yours, you're not paying for yours, not his. He's got his own separate water meter that goes to that house. I know that because I used to read water meters for this town and so therefore.
You're not listening, you're not listening. James, you're not listening. I own the house, I pay the water bill, I paid it five years before I got on the board. It's my bill, it's not their bill.
Okay, then send him a bill for that water meter.
He does.
And he'll pay it where he is locked out.
And I don't have to pay it at this point.
Yes, you do.
I do not have to pay it at this point until the board has made a final decision on what we're going to do with it.
And even when that happens, an ordinance cannot change until the next legislature.
Once again, it's two addresses.
I understand that.
There's not one.
We talked about it last meeting though and the ordinance is written horribly vague.
He is scaming this town from water.
Can you have a copy?
It, it is a loophole.
I don't need a copy.
You know what that is?
Because guess what? I know it's two addresses and you got two water meters.
And I paid them both for that water?
And according to the ordinance, the board members get free water, which we talked last month is a horribly written ordinance. And we need to talk about.
But you also said last month that any common person would understand that it's for the residents he lives in.
So is the problem with this water meter that it never had a deposit put in?
Deposit was paid, it was paid to Candace and Jared.
Candace.
The problem is that it's a separate water meter. That means his son is getting free water.
Yes.
No, he's not.
Yes, he is. Yes, he, yes, he is. I don't see how you understand it's not.
Is it any different?
He is still in this town.
Is it any different, I was living in a house for almost five years. The five of us, the five of us still in the house and then we just had, put the other building in and stayed.
You have a water meter, a separate water meter, yes or no?
I have a separate water meter at this point, yes.
Then you have a separate residence.
That's $25 a month. It's $150 a month.
Are you on there doing the talk?
Excuse me.
It's not public appearance yet. You, you're more welcome to talk to public appearances.
Well, I'm sure she will, she'll be back in a few minutes then.
I don't think we need to get that way. That's one of the reasons, that attitude is why there are three new members on this board.
Yes, and there's, well, there's three board members here because the people of this community was tired of getting cheated.
Yes.
And that's what's being done.
So apples to apples, so $300 is what it said.
What I'm saying is, board members snapping at residents in meetings and telling them that they're not allowed to talk is something that the old board did. So, telling people you're not, you're not public appearance, we don't want to hear from you, I don't agree with.
I don't agree with, I don't agree with him, his son getting free water.
I understand.
Because that's stealing from this community.
But we just need, we need to treat our residents with respect even when we're up here at the table.
But it was going on for two and a half years and I'm sorry, but the only reason it was brought up was out of spite. And it, I'm not, it's not.
But so was Jared, so was Jared himself too. Jared was stealing for this from the community for years too. And guess what? I brought it up.
Did you bring up during the time when Rocky and his son-in-law got the water?
I wasn't on here.
Two separate, there's two separate addresses and they're still using the same garbage?
One year.
Wasn't here then.
I know you weren't.
You could have brought it up.
But I didn't know about it, I wasn't here.
Oh, you could have.
You gotta be here first.
But again, he's not the one that's inputting the utility bill. He's not the one.
They still requiring two.
So just for curiosity's sake, what would y'all think of him paying his own 25 and paying for the animals? Because that was what the fight was.
The argument's.
Making that last, last meeting.
No, it wasn't a fight with that, it was only having a separate water bill.
Yes, but what I'm saying is, what if he paid his and his building and then he paid his bigger house with the animals utility? I know, but what if he paid his small house? Am I not, am I not saying it right? Am I not saying it right?
You're saying why don't he?
I think we're moving, we're having this stuff because we're moving the board and y'all are gonna start paying, right?
His house and the son.
A basic water bill, more 25.
Well, $300 is what the ordinance states.
It does not.
Doesn't say anything about them.
So the ordinance basically says that board members are compensated for their water bill and trash bill.
For the residents they live in.
It does not say that.
Doesn't say that.
He basically said the same thing, a common person.
A common person, yes.
And that's by law, that's what it's, am I, am I lying?
We're not, no, you're not lying, but you're talking about interpretation. The rule of interpretation is supposed to go do it by the book, the basic, most common sense reason that you look at. The problem that we have here is the current, the way it's written in the code is nonspecific, is vague. We've got interpretive rules that we've applied saying it's up to $300, which isn't in the thing at all. So we, it's poorly written and poorly thought through code, but that's where it is.
Well, because basically what there's, what he's saying is, it's all right if I open a car wash on my land.
That's, that's what I, that was the example I used last, was like, nobody would have assumed that you could have a commercial business and run a splash pad or a community pool or whatever, because the water used to be. Clearly it was designed to say for the board members, that in lieu of compensation, that's what the compensation was, was the credit for the water. That's, I mean, that's.
However, it also would could be easily assumed that if I were to put in a, in my case, a father-in-law apartment in the back of our house and move my father down here, that he would be included in the same water system and meter and, and compensation that I am at.
If it was.
That could also be easily assumed, interpreted, so.
Can, can we read, because y'all just told me it didn't say 300?
It does.
At the compensation, or the compensation of certain officers shall be set by the ordinance pursuant to the blah blah. And then right here it says one town clerk, two members, board of trustees, 300 per month, water, sewer, trash. I think that 300.
Town clerk is 600 a month.
Well, now it is. The, it's 600 now, but the 300 I believe, that's the town compensation.
Well, just what?
Town clerk.
Well, I guess I can tell my neighbors they might pay a water bill.
So I downloaded. File and then I.
But is it obviously 300?
Yeah, right here, same property. Right on each other.
But they're all.
I own this one or that one? That's what you're saying.
Okay, no, that's not what I'm saying, that's what the ordinance thinks open for.
That's stealing from the town.
But.
Even that, on the same premise, you put up a four-story apartment complex, you've got the apartment on the top floor. You own the building, you own the property, you own it.
I understand.
Is the other three apartments, three of these?
Do I, do I personally think that the other property should be getting free water? No, I don't. I think it's a loophole that has been utilized for two years and now it's getting slammed shut and people, not everybody likes it. However, to say that my interpretation of the law is more important than your interpretation of the law instead of just.
But there's.
Saw, instead of, yes, there is.
No, there's not.
It is, it's our town ordinance. But that is, a poorly written law is still a law, whether you like it or not.
What's it say?
Where is it? It's section.
There's also the, the constitution there too.
So section 156, compensation of personnel determined by ordinance, section A, subsection 2, members, board of trustees, water, sewer, trash services provided at no cost to board members during their service members as board members, during their service as board members. All it says.
Does he have a water meter?
It says nothing about water.
Does he have a water meter? A separate water meter.
I don't, I'm reading this, I don't care.
I don't, I'm just saying that, that's part of the deal.
But.
His water meter goes to his house.
I think everybody in this room understands what you're saying.
Yeah, I know.
So let me finish. Instead of arguing every single month about this, let's just put it up to a public hearing. Let's put the ordinance to where it is and be done with it.
Let's change your ordinance.
Exactly, but there's a way to do it other than, I don't like you, so I want it done now.
No, it does not, I don't like stealing from the community.
For sake, if he paid the small bill, because the animal bill is also his, is what he's saying. It just for, get off the pot, like come on, we have time.
That's fine, it's not $25 a month.
Well, whatever it is.
If I take the 2,000 gallons a month or 3,000 gallons a month that the animals drink off of that other bill, both houses use the same amount of water.
Yeah.
How about a 37 dollars and 68 cents a month?
What's that?
How about $137.68 for the big house?
We bought, we bought that house.
Most of that is for garbage.
She would have approximately 10 years to live. Well, we moved down from up north down here because the warm weather would be nicer for her. Her 10 years was up last year. Now, last time she heard this commotion going on.
She ended up in the hospital.
She ended up in the hospital. One foot goes this way, one foot goes that way. And she goes, and she jerks to the side and opens her mouth.
How's it dirty?
It's just not necessary. It is dirty, it wasn't a problem in the past two and a half years. It's not a problem because Mary Lee got butt kicked out. And now she's in here trying to mess stuff up and y'all are, two months later now, the next meeting, we're still having the same fights that was brought up.
You're just trying to get me mad.
I am not saying it's not a problem.
What are you trying to do?
I'm making sure everyone does their part.
No, you're not.
Yes, I am.
Oh, you want me to go in on what I have heard about you?
Go ahead.
Y'all take it another minute.
I can tell you the same thing about you.
What? You haven't heard?
But I'm not gonna go into it.
You haven't heard anything on me.
This is on subject.
Actually, we need to.
Yeah, we're on to something here.
This is beyond, this needs to stop, my board member needs to stop.
What's that?
We.
He's stealing from the town.
No, he's stealing from the town.
No, he's not. Did he do the input on QuickBooks or the? No, he didn't, he's not the one inputting it. It's not his.
But we're still obligated, what we're.
I'm not saying, but they're saying he's stealing from the town. He's not the one that was behind the desk making the numbers go to zero.
But once again, we're obligated by law to act.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
But why do they tell me not to act? I've been on the board for how many years?
Well, I'm the one that found it, I'm the one that brought it.
Well, and it's fine, but he's not the one.
Because I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure what was going on there.
You didn't find it, Kimberly found it. And Kimberly wrote her little notes.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Brittany says.
Well, she didn't, she didn't tell me.
Brittany and Kimberly.
She didn't tell me, I found it, like she didn't give me anything.
Kimberly is not here to defend herself.
Let's get back on track here.
We need to stop arguing. So in order to solve this problem, I move that we as board members as a whole volunteer to pay all of water bills for every property that we own and use the money to pay for the software for the town that we agreed earlier to, to agree to. Until such a time that the ordinance has changed that that compensation is no longer there.
So I throw a small wrench, are we gonna do the same for the town clerk?
I agree.
I move, I, I move that we do this.
I'll say again.
And we put it to a vote.
I'd rate mine already.
What, what say you?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Don't be in there all day.
No. So.
Don't be in there.
We, we have voted five to zero. As, then we will start paying our water bills, all of them, and we will use the money for the town and we can stop arguing and we can.
When do we start?
Next month's up to.
Let's do it next month, let's do it right away. And let's sit here as a board and let's, let's stop pulling each other apart because if we don't work together, we're going to fail. And the last board failed this town and I don't know if this town can actually survive another board failing.
I agree with you because the last couple of boards have done so much by not having things done that should have been done.
Right.
I've been fighting for two and a half years, some of the things I suggested, Sandy backed me up some, Mary Lee backed me up on some, but there's a lot of stuff that didn't get backed up on that should have been addressed.
And no one's gonna agree with everything that I say and I'm great with that. I'm one of five voices, but if I fight and pick and poke and points, then all it's gonna do is just hurt the town. Can we put this to bed? Okay. Thank you.
So now.
Starting next month.
All our properties that are in our names are.
We will pay.
We will pay.
And we'll use this money to, to be able to get stuff to help the residents of the town and to help our employees move, work more effectively.
So let me be clear, are we doing it September or October?
As soon as you get your numbers and send out the bills.
I will, I will pay mine this month. And my husband can yell at me at home if he wants to.
I pay mine every month.
Yeah. If somebody else says, hey, you know what, give me a month to get things straightened out, great.
And Brittany, if you wanna join in, you're more welcome to do it.
But let's also keep in mind that as an employee, her benefits are different than ours.
Does John get, you do get free?
And so it is, uh, General Lee.
So that is an.
You guys are more welcome to keep your, your compensation.
That's up to you guys.
It says town clerk and board member, so that's good. I'm glad you have, if that's what y'all wanna keep.
So, but as far as we voted, the board members will start paying either this month or next.
Are we done with that issue?
Are we all done?
Okay, we're gonna go back to consideration, discussion, action on claims, environmental invoice, and final payment, plans update.
So, um, he did, he, when he worked on the, um. Bus station, um, he did what he could, I mean, one pumps out. So he digs in invoice, itemized, and I said I would get him his check because last board, I said to pay him, so.
Did he say what the pump's gonna cost?
No, he didn't.
Yeah, we did ask him for a quote, but he won't, it sounds like it would be a different.
Yeah, he, I'm not sure he can do it.
This is the one that he was talking to us about today that they had done the rewire report. It runs backwards, but it won't run forward.
Is that him?
I don't know.
I don't know if that is.
I remember the last meeting he was talking about, there was some wire bad, that he had to get the wires fixed. And then you'd know if the pump was bad or not, if that was gonna be.
And he did do, he did do some rewiring, but he said the pump.
He was telling us earlier today when I was over helping Brandon, he said, the motor's fine, he said, it's the pump down. He said it'll run backwards, but it won't run forward.
So it's like a gearbox issue?
No, it's probably a blockage.
Okay.
Think, think of garbage disposal.
I've never worked on one of those either.
You never had to break one or anything?
No, that's why I got married, that's why I have a husband.
But he can't.
It's the same premise, it's free one way, but it hangs up the other way.
He did what he could, but he couldn't, he couldn't fix it.
So you need signatures on checks tomorrow or today?
Yeah, I told him, I told him I would have it, I would, I told him I would get the check printed tomorrow and it might be the next day before I got it.
Call me if you need me to stop buying them.
Okay, now we're on to.
Nine point one. Consideration, discussion, action, possibly changing ordinance on town board members receiving free water that's coming to take.
Okay, we're done with that.
We're done with that.
We're done with that.
Done.
Consideration, discussion, action on non-employees access to town equipment.
Um, so this was just something I wanted to, to get out there, um, and I, Brandon already took off for the day, but, uh, when, when we've had volunteer helpers, um, I've gotten text messages asking, "Can so-and-so drive the Tahoe, can so-and-so do this?" I just wanna reiterate that my position as a board member, that if you're not a town employee, you're not covered by town insurance, and therefore you should not be operating any town equipment. I don't know if you guys agree with me on that?
Oh, yeah, just like we should not use any town equipment either on citizens' property.
Yep, again, the liability. Yep, that's what I'm saying. So, I don't need to ask you on it, I just wanted to say that out loud.
Nine six, considerations, discussion, action on notification policy for shutting off the water. You were talking about two, three notices, and then doing it?
How long are you gonna set up?
You talking about shutting off the meters, or are you talking about shutting off the town?
Talking about shutting off water.
Wait out, an individual.
For people who are.
Lock out meters.
So, right, right now, it's a, it's a.
Forty-eight hour notice?
I mean, I don't, I don't know what you guys wanna do, I, I know that, last time we talked about it, you wanted a fifteen day.
I, I was thinking a two-week notice, followed by a second two-week notice, and there is no third, in my opinion. I don't know what the rest of you think.
I wouldn't give a second.
Usually, how it's been done in the past is she'll usually send them a letter, tell them, "I got a new bill," and she'll, she'll give them extra time, like, ten days on to that letter, to contact her. If they don't contact her within those ten days, then they'll, she sends a twenty-five notice and.
Great, if that's the way you've been doing it, then.
Yeah.
Just make sure we're starting to win.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, consideration, discussion, action on compensation for utility helper Jimmy Potite.
You wanted this on there, Tom?
Yeah, so, there was a few days last month that Brandon really needed some help, and he came to me and said, "Hey, Jimmy Potite would help me." It was never a volunteer position, I knew that, and really, there was so much, water line, we had a water line group, we had exo capes that needed to be done, and the meters needed to be red, and I said, "I think you should, you should do it." But, I know it wasn't my call, but I, I, we really didn't have time, it was kind of an emergency. So, he did some work for us, and now he wants to get paid for it. I called, um, OML, and talked to them, and I said, "There's no, there's no law that they have that would prohibit us paying him." He wanted me to check with our attorney to see if, if we had anything like that. He did the work, he should get paid. It's not a bunch of money, it's probably about $200 bucks.
What is he asking for?
He's just, it's $10 an hour, so, and, and I think it came to, like, right at $200. I just wanted to be, you know, I could've, I could've just gone ahead and paid him, but I wanted to be very transparent, you know, and let you guys know what was going on.
I think if any other contractor would come and do a bunch of work, and then show up at town hall and say, "You guys owe me money now," we'd probably lock him out the door. I don't know how this should be different.
He was never told that, he was, he always, we always just assumed he'd get paid, so really, like, and he, and I told him it would be $10 an hour, because that's what we were paying Justin, um, and Justin would, you know, when he wasn't showing up.
Yeah, that didn't work out.
Um, and we really need, we, Jimmy has worked here before, so he knows, he knew, you know, where all the meters were, I mean, and Brandon was so, like, before God was so frustrated, that it really, I think eased him a little bit, so, I don't feel bad about, I feel bad about not getting you guys involved in it, and I'm sorry about that. I'll let all of you spank me later, but, um.
It'll pass.
But, but, but that one.
Yep.
But, we really did need the help, and he was the only one, so.
So, then what is your ask for this?
I just wanna pay him for the hours that he worked.
How many hours?
I'll, I'll have to get, Brandon has the sheet that he, but I looked at it once, and it came to about $200. It wasn't an extravagant amount, but I really wanna get you guys, you know, okay before I do it. And I'll never do that again, I promise, I promise.
Well, on, on that note, that wouldn't be any different than us pulling somebody in from Labor Finders, or whatever, to help for a day or two, so, I don't, in that particular instance, I don't see an issue with it. Not like you said, if a contractor just walked in and started doing work, that'd be a little bit different, but he said, "Hey, you know, I, you know, I have knowledge," and they said, "Would you give us a hand?"
Yep.
Then, it, it wouldn't be any different than hiring a big figure from Labor Finders.
Can you make a motion, then?
I'd make a motion, we go ahead and let him have it, but, uh, $200 or whatever the amount equates to.
I'll send y'all a text tomorrow, I mean, hours.
I will accept that motion this one time.
Okay.
And, though, if somebody wants to get paid from the town, then they can agree to it before they do the work.
Sandy, yes.
James, yes. Richard, yes.
Thank you.
But you want one.
I agree with you on it.
Nine point eight, consideration, discussion, action on setting employee handbook, policy and procedure book, and setting up a better policy and procedure for billing update.
We're gonna work on that. Right, no action.
And nine point nine, intent, can be no action right now, I'll have to wait till I get the DEQ report.
Send it.
Um, I haven't sent it out to you, so we haven't had a chance to talk.
We haven't gotten it yet.
So, a DEQ report, as in?
DEQ just came, did their normal inspection, so there's, we haven't even been able to, to look at it, so I couldn't.
Oh, okay. So, what about nine point nine, though?
Um, I will, I'll wait until I have my paper ready.
So, once that report is done, then, okay. So, just then, for the record, once that report comes in, you're gonna go ahead and pull your water license from the town?
My water license is already bolted.
And then, from that, you're, and at that point, you're stepping away completely from that utility side?
Yes.
Okay.
Number ten, consideration, discussion, action on DEQ report.
So, then, do we table that for next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Table's back over. Any new business?
So, what are we, what are y'all doing about somebody having a water license?
We're just set to con. Hey, ORWA's.
We're just gonna source out all the work. Y'all ain't working toward none, nobody getting licensed.
Well, we are, but we're waiting.
We are, but they're eight months behind on even, they're eight months, they're eight months behind on even giving him a permit to work under somebody else for the license.
Can we, can we ask why now? Is the license being turned in?
I think it was a personal decision, based on some personnel issues that we've had within the town, that we talked about in executive session.
So, that's gonna negatively impact the town, right?
It may, um, it is, however, fully within her right to do so.
I agree.
Then you'll give us a list of who's called.
Now, to be fair.
Someone's gonna issue.
And to be fair, if there's an emergency, you know, people calls, I'm sure we can tell on you to help for that, I mean, that's not going to let you.
I do have a question. If he's working with someone that's licensed, is he still not allowed to have hands-on and help?
No, he can't. He asked, we were still.
He's gotta have his temporary license, though, he still can't touch nothing.
It's flowing water now.
If he's working, if he's working under someone with a license, how's that any different if we have someone with a license, and they have the utility worker they're working? I guess I don't understand the.
Because the person here that, that is, has the license, is actually his supervisor. When you get it from another town, it's gotta be somebody from the town.
An apprentice that passes within the town? I didn't get that.
And unfortunately, that's state law, we can't, we can't change it.
So, his temporary license is on hold.
So, is it on hold, or it takes eight months?
No, it's on hold until we get somebody, somebody with a C license to be his supervisor, so they're.
So, just going to stop there, you guys already see what this is doing to the town? Like, y'all residents see.
But you guys, you guys don't understand what.
But you gave your warning. You gave your warning.
There was a legal liability.
Eight months?
There was, there was a warning, Heather.
There were a lot of things that were going on behind the scenes, so there, it's not that this didn't just happen without warning, there were things that were happening within the personnel that caused it. Whether, whose, whose fault it is or isn't, it's not, it wasn't sudden.
Well, to us, over here.
It is, but, you know, just the same way that I'm not going to go to the public and say, "Hey, guess what this employee's doing."
Well, that's why I'm here talking.
Yep.
Thank you.
Can I get a, like, do, could I get a license? Like, just go take the test and?
It'd still be eight months.
Yeah, it's waiting.
Well, it's, it's, that's just because of fact, if I could get a number from them, I, I just couldn't get the actual certificates.
So, then, why can't we get a number for Brandon?
Yeah.
Because you, you, because he has to have someone with the C license to supervise him, and they have to be.
So, so, right now, you could go out and get your temporary license.
I could, I could get my C license, couldn't I?
You have to have a temp, well, there's situations, there's requirements with DEQ that have an educational part of it. If you don't have a GED, you have to have years of experience with a temp license, so you have to have a year of holding a temp license. When you get a temp license, then you can apply for a D. You have to have a D for a year before you can apply for a C.
Okay, so then.
But I have a, I would, yeah.
John can apply for his temp. He can apply for his temp, and then wait for the next class, and then go get a D.
And then, as soon as you have a D, then Brandon has temporary license, could he could touch water as long as John is standing right there?
Not till I get my C.
Not till you get a C?
I have to get my C.
Yeah, you'll have to.
So, what does the D all cover?
C is there.
Water and my school.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think, and I'll check in tomorrow, tomorrow, I'll find out, but I think they can, like, almost go, like, boom, 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 so.
Okay, that'd be great, if you could look into that.
Yeah.
So, just, did the town pay for this license? They sure did.
We paid for everyone's license, even Brandon.
I would assume, y'all see where I'm going?
Even when Brandon pays for it, uh, when he gets his license, the town paid for it, and also paid for his training, goes through trainings.
So, we paid for it, and now it's just.
Does she get a pay raise when she?
She has.
Got the license?
Her pay has nothing to do with it. She don't get no extra money.
Well, it's fine for her to ask.
I know, y'all see, I go, and I don't really like that, just 'cause I'm asking.
No, I mean, we have a lot of.
They're no additional compensation for.
She's not getting no additional pay for having the class C, or class D license, class D license.
Well, what I'm also getting at is if the town's paid for it, and we invested that into her, I just, that's just.
But we paid for everyone's license before.
And that's, but did they turn their license in when we really needed it?
No, but it's, no, how long she's had, I think, how long she's had.
For a while.
I've had my U for a couple, and I've had my C.
So, you've had yours for more than a year?
I believe my C is about a year now.
And so, yeah, so, yeah, they'd be past the 12 months and everything of it, so.
I'd have to look for the exact date, but I've had my U for two or three years.
It just puts the whole town in a really.
That's the problem, that's the problem.
If y'all aren't upset about it, I would be shocked, because residents are upset about it. And I know we don't always get our way, but we're voicing our concern.
The problem we've had in the past, even before we were, was when we'd get people hired on, and they go through their, get the license or class D and class D license, and once they, once they get that class D, they quit for a better paying job. I mean, it's been done so many.
It's been like that for years.
I know that, but, I mean, that's why y'all raised the pay, too.
Yep.
Try to, to try to keep someone here, and that's, even though ORWA's, like, you know, you're, you're going in the right direction, when you, I was talking to, what was his name?
Travis.
Travis, you know, he said, "You're, you're going in the right direction, try to keep them."
Thinking outside the box, problem solving, trying, is there anybody that the town knows of that has someone in town that we could pay?
Nope.
And then, did you even look into it? Is there, I'm assuming we have somebody in town that we can.
When we have to look at our budget.
Can I finish, can I, just, can I finish my thought?
Correct.
So, if someone in town, we can pay them in the middle, so that he can get his hands on and do things, is that, it's just, I'm spitballing ideas, because.
It's not in the budget.
Never mind.
So, just.
There is some people here in town.
A minute ago, there was leeway for the, what you just proposed, but now, when we're having water problems, there's no budget.
Well.
Just, I'm just trying to give ideas.
To answer your question, yes, there is people in town that has their class D and class D license. Now, if they wanted to say, "Hey, I'll let you guys work under my license."
Just an idea.
That, that's up to them.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But then.
So, it's an idea.
But then, if emergency.
More, more than what we had five minutes ago, right?
Well, if some, if some emergency happened, then would they have to be standing right there for Brandon to do anything?
And we have a lot of people that would do things like that for this town to help. That's what I'm trying.
If we did something really wrong.
Then they would go to jail.
They would go to jail.
Like Elton Moore, Elton Moore's got a class D.
Thank you. I didn't know for sure if he was, I wasn't gonna say his name, but I know that man would do a lot for this town, and I really don't appreciate me trying to come up with a good idea, and I'm being attacked, like, I'm sorry, I'm talking stupid.
My neighbor right here.
Like, it's a bad idea.
My neighbor right here, that lives next to me, he's, he works for the city of Stillwater in the sewer and water department, so he has a class C, class D license.
Oh, have we?
Yeah.
Did you already say?
We've used Elton's water license before.
Yes, and that's why I was speaking, we've actually used Elton's.
My problem is, I've been going on four months with no water pressure, and I get told, "Well, he can't do nothing bad if I don't have a water license."
They gotta go to their lady shower.
So, I'm gonna wait for eight months for water pressure?
Where do you, you live?
East of town.
East of town.
I'm three months now, I'm buying on water bills that I have...
I thought you were gonna look at, did you go look at that, Tom? I thought you said you were gonna go take a look.
Brandon did. He looks at the, he looks at the meter.
That's all he told me to do. He can look at it 'cause we got a water license in this town to do anything.
To hear that it could be eight months, y'all, that's...
We know.
Yeah, it's not hard.
So, I would think any idea that comes to the table should be heard.
I just, I just really hope that the same ideas would be coming to the table if it wasn't Brittany who pulled her license.
If, if anybody has pulled their license, look out because...
We're trying to make, get it said.
You guys understand that if something went wrong, he would go to jail and that like...
But they just said he just, he's already done it. They just said he's done it.
Well, Jimmy's worked here for years.
I wasn't saying that's what we're gonna do. I was just trying to offer a solution because it came into my mind. Is there any other thing we can do? Because us not have, us depending on other towns to get down and do their part, that's just putting us in a really bad position.
Another issue we have is even if we did have Elton here, is the equipment to dig?
Well, we have, we have many X's.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, find that equipment. So, if, even if I went to Elton and be like, "Hey, can we, you wanna help us out?" And let us use your license?
We would help more.
And we could do that if Elton was agreed to it.
Yeah.
And he would have to be here.
Yes. And y'all know he would do a lot for this town, just like many of us would.
The gentleman next to me, if I went to him and said, "Hey, is there any way that we, you could help us" even though he's got a class C or class D license? He might say, "Yeah." I don't know.
I'm just saying, I mean, he probably, I, that was, I didn't, I wasn't gonna say his name 'cause I didn't know for sure if he's still or what the situation was. But regardless, guys, and we're now seeing turning corners and so we do want to help y'all.
Anyone's got a class C or class D license can actually help the attorney if they wanted to help, so.
And if so, that's great. Like I said, I just wanna make sure that the same conversation would be happening if it wasn't Brittany who pulled her license.
We would. It wouldn't matter who pulled the license. We would be having this conversation.
It's bad. And alongside all the other drama, it is questionable but I don't understand that side, so I'll leave it there.
But I will say, I, I don't know, Elton would let us use his license.
I mean, I, honestly, the way things have been and the way literally last...
He'd have to leave his job in the middle of the day if there was an emergency, things like that.
Well, no, you would shut the water off.
So, I'm gonna do this.
It was just an idea.
I'll, I'll find out how long it takes. I know that they're backed up on getting the certificates out but you can call them. I get to do it and I get my number and that's really all you need. So, let me do that tomorrow and, and find out how long it would take for me to get all of them.
Well, there may be someone else besides Elton. I'm just saying.
Well, like I said, my neighbor is, he works for the city of...
But you gotta understand that not everybody wants to come put their license on the line 'cause of liability reasons. It comes back on them.
You don't have to talk to me like I don't know about liability. I do.
Well, I'm just saying.
But there are things that people are willing, if they know what they're doing and they look at a problem, they say, "Yeah, I can do this for you guys because this is what I do and I want to help you guys because this is a problem for our hometown."
So, who helped at the, at the trailer parts?
Elton. Well, ORWA and I got Elton to come down.
Actually, Agra did.
Yeah, Agra.
Agra came back over and...
So, there's like three people down there. There's Agra, O, ORWA and then...
ORWA fixed it first and it came on, it was pulled apart.
Then we had to get Agra.
Yeah, then we got Elton and he was busy and couldn't do it, so then we had to get Agra. Either way, if it's an emergency, we're gonna get someone like that. Even if we did, went with Elton or we went with my neighbor or whoever, we'd still have to contact someone to come over and do the emergency dig. I mean, 'cause most of the people have full-time jobs. But that's just two people I know that got licensed. Any other new business? Motion to adjourn? James, yes.